Would you please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sandy, roll call.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Palafini.
Here.
Mayor Susan Tabalero.
Here. Thank you. So now, at this point, is the time for public comment on something that is not on the agenda. So if anybody would like to speak right now for something that's not on the agenda, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. Kevin Charter, and I am at 3835 Columbine Road in Weed. And exciting times here tonight. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to chat with you. Thank you for doing the pledge allegiance. It's actually rarely done. It's not done at the Siskiyou High School meeting, so it's great to hear that. So I appreciate that. Back here back in June, I just want to give you an update about the reunification of Weed Elementary with Weed High School. We had a meeting with Kermit Walters and a brief with the joint school boards as requested. Stacy Green was gracious enough to be there. I really appreciate you being there. I know that was put out to the council on video, so I hope you have an opportunity to look at that. My request is that it is formally put on the agenda for next month. I would appreciate that. And I just want to clarify a real point of potential confusion that might be out there is talking to a few people. The city council is not in the position to make this decision to unify the schools or not. That's not what we're asking you to do at all. It's not in your purview to do. That's completely understood. Ultimately, it'd be up to the residents in Weed to vote on that. And it simply, we're asking you to do your help from the students and parents here in Weed, is to pass a resolution allowing this county to simply do an investigation, to determine the feasibility of it, whether it's worth doing or not. If it comes out that it's not, so be it. If it comes out that it is worth doing, well, we'll press forward from there. But I just want to make sure that that is clear and the understanding, not put any undue pressure on all of you. That is not the intent by any means. Can't even be there, even be sides at this point, because we don't know what we don't know at this point in time. So it's truly just an investigative measure, and I hope the board of the council will take that up next month and appreciate your time. I'll let you get back to more important things. Good luck.
And this is important. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda?
Hi, Jim Striegel, 2601 North Old Stage Road, Mount Shasta. In case anyone here hadn't heard, close to half the students at Weed High School are under COVID quarantine right now, and 100 students at Mount Shasta High School, the COVID virus, the Delta, is running rampant in our county because we have under 40% fully vaccinated. I would like to know if the council is going to start imposing a mask mandate for the meetings upcoming, because it's only going to get worse as the weather gets cooler and people go inside. No, you guys, you're okay. Thank you, Ken. The main thing I wanted to speak about was Tesla Superchargers. I first came to the council in 2013 when the Tesla first came out and said you should apply for a Supercharger station here. Year went by, another year went by, nothing happened. Eventually, Mount Shasta got the Superchargers that they have now. I sent a proposal to Tesla Motors to build a Supercharger station in the two empty parking lots on either side of Asian American BBQ across from the Weed Arch. I said there's five restaurants within a 60-second walk of there, and it's right at the gateway downtown Weed. Be great for tourism and visitors and bring money into town. Tesla approved that plan. I gave the correspondence to the previous city manager. Ron, I guess dropped the ball. Nothing happened. There was nothing. I've talked to Tim Rundle about it, and I'm hoping he follows up. I resent him the email that I got from Tesla. Tesla just announced that they are going to let all electric cars use their Supercharger network, Ford, Chevy, BMWs, Mercedes, Hondas, everything. And plus, besides that, increasing exponentially the number of cars using the Supercharger network. Tesla is also going to be coming out next year with their super-cheap, under $25,000 Model 2, which will sell a gazillion. They have one and a quarter million reservations for their electric pickup truck. It would behoove the council to help him rattle the cage of whoever owns that property, say, "Look, not only will they have a steady stream of income from leasing their property to Tesla, but it'd be great for the city to have a steady stream of electric cars coming here for an hour to charge up, eat at our restaurants, do some gift shopping and stuff like that." So I don't know if you can, I know, I remember, Bob, a few years ago in the paper, you quoted a poll that you guys took of local businesses. What's the number one thing that we need in downtown Weed? Tourism. We need visitors with money. And this is the easy way to get it. It's already been approved. So please, if you can, I don't know, the person that owns the property, but rattle their cage, give Tim a shove. It would be great if this could happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is, the point that I was going to make is that it, we don't own those pieces of property. So the owners of the property need to buy that. And I'm sorry, I would like to excuse our city manager, Tim Rundle, tonight. He is, had to fly back to Oklahoma, Arkansas. His father is in the hospital. And it doesn't look good. So he's out, and we're all good with that. Anybody else on the non-agenda public comment?
Good evening, council. Richard Dinges with the Weed Chamber of Commerce, 34 Main Street. A couple of things I just want to bring you up to date on. One, we had a great car show a couple of weeks back, and we want to thank the city for helping us make that a success. The Chinese auction is coming up October 2nd. It's going to be a drive-through dinner, and it's going to start at 5:00 to 7:00, and then the auction's going to start from 7:00 to 9:00. So just to let you know that tickets will be on sale soon. The city beautification has begun this week. We bought 18 pairs of flower boxes to put out. They're going to be put up tomorrow, starting tomorrow. We've marked everything along the sidewalks with X's. I don't know if anybody was wondering what those X's were, but that's where the boxes are going to go. We do have somebody that's going to plant them, and then we're going, we'll probably have the planting done by the weekend. So they'll be up and running, and not running, but they'll be up and be able to be visible. We also signed a contract with AARP for an individual to help us maintain those and also maintain the beautification plan that we've got. This could take in Heritage Park also. So we're going to try to make sure that we get the sidewalks in repair, take out the weeds, make sure that they are blown or swept, and try to do that on a regular basis. So we have this person for 20 hours, or 20 hours a week, and it's a four-year contract. So hopefully, we can keep the city pretty clean. The other thing that I need to ask is how we go about taking the Vision statue and maybe relocating it towards the front of Main Street, maybe up by the chamber.
Did we ever decide who owns it?
I think the city owns it. I think we did decide that that was given to the city at one time.
Did we decide the city owns it? Yeah, well, that's what they're saying, is to get it out where people can actually see it, because it's now like a tree. Craig?
So we'd like to get it up maybe near the...
Can we have him call you?
I believe we need to check with who originally installed the statue and brought the statue here to the city.
It was a family. I remember that.
Yeah, and before we move it, I think we need to reach out to them.
That's good communication.
I know Neva Barnett was a part of that group. I think we need to reach out to them before they see their statue up there and go...
Okay, will you take that on?
I can do that.
Okay. So the two of you will communicate?
Yep. And that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, anybody else for public comment that is not on the agenda? All right, thank you. Now it is time for council member announcements, meeting reports, or comments. Who wants to go first? Bob, are you ready?
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Okay. Stacy?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. I was, as Mr. K, Mr. Kay, I call him that, mentioned I was at the school meeting, very informative, as being here since I was three years old. I didn't know the differences that were happening between elementary school and high school, and I mentioned to Kim, we were colleagues since kindergarten. Going over that hill, elementary school, high school, I didn't realize the differences, and it was very interesting to hear what the people and community members have to say. And I totally agree with the statement that we need to be involved. So I encourage everyone, when there are meetings, please attend. It was just 15 or 20 people in the audience. It was on Zoom too, but I'd like to see more faces there. So we know that it's your kids, your grandkids, your neighbors, your nephews, your nieces. Your voice is what's going to drive this, and it should be the driver, not any political piece. So I was happy to be a part of that. I learned a lot about what is going on from the superintendent, what is known, what is not known, what the process is for unification, and it was very informative to see it. And I encourage everyone to attend at this time. And that's, and of course, other community members have been mentioning different things that we're going to talk about later. But as I was talking to colleagues here, I appreciate freedom of speech. And please continue to employ that, because that's what this country is built on. In some instances, it doesn't like it's happening, but you do have that right to share your thoughts and your ideas, and please continue that. That's a wrap.
Thank you. Ken?
All right, I have a list here.
Is your, okay.
Okay. First of all, I'd say that I've been involved with the farmer's market, although it has had very modest response. We will continue for the next three weeks. We've had a small problem with consistency of vendors. We are the new kid on the block with farmer's markets, so it is part of what was kind of expected a bit. Also, I'd like to mention that we are at senior lunch, and we have had 60 people on average per week. It's a program for socialization in food. It's been very well received, and our constituents are coming back. I'd like to put a big thanks out to the Siskiyou County Democrats who have been volunteering their time. And I would also like to thank Casa Roma's Mount Shasta Supermarket and Ellie's Bakery for their support on helping us cater the event. Let me take this off. That's hard. I would also like to finish my comments tonight by encouraging all Siskiyou County and Weed residents in particular to get vaccinated so that we in our communities can get back to normal. I would like to read a short definition of a term called cognitive dissonance. It's a psychological term. It is a reason why people get upset when their beliefs are challenged. A mental conflict occurs when beliefs are contradicted by new information. This conflict activates areas in the brain involved in personal identity and emotional response to threats. The brain alarms go off when threatened on a deeply personal or emotional level. It causes them to shut down and refuse to recognize any rational evidence that contradicts what they previously regarded as truth. Examples of cognitive dissonance range from vaccinations, black history, American genocide of Native Americans, climate change, and immigration, and that's just a few. The fact that social media lets us feed into the things that really comfort us is one of the things that perpetuates the lies and the unrecognized fact. And coincidentally, tonight, on tonight's agenda, you're going to face one of those uncomfortable topics, which is feral cats and their colonies. And you will probably notice a bit of emotional and personal conflict. So with that in mind, look at yourselves, look inside, and if you want to recognize some of the faults in all of us, look to the definition of cognitive dissonance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken? I'm sorry. No.
No awards, please. Thank you.
Not the place for that. Kim?
I don't think I have anything.
No? Okay. To go with the farmer's market is Saturday, this Saturday, for the next three weeks till the end of the month, from 10:00 to 1:00 over at Baller Park. There's music every week, too. So even if you don't want yummy, triangle-shaped chocolates, or carrots, or all this... Yeah, purple onions. There is music to sit and listen to, and it's actually usually pretty nice. And some, one of the problems that we have had with getting the vendors there has been the smoke. There's been a few different times that they've just texted and said, "I can't come out with the smoke." But then that seems to be sadly a lot of the problems with things. I sit on the county transportation committee, and that is on the second Tuesday of every month, and we haven't had the second Tuesday yet. So I have nothing to report for that. And then, Richard, Halloween in downtown Weed on Saturday, not Sunday. Trunk or treat like last year? And if I would like to put a car in it, I come to the chamber, okay, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It was extremely successful last year and a lot of fun, and lots of people said, "I want to take my car there next year." So it could be double the amount of cars, which the kids got plenty of candy with the amount of cars that were there last year. And then to the council, watch, because I'm pretty sure Lola is next month. I couldn't find the date, the exact date, but Tim will, Sandy will let you know. We are not hosting it. No, Fort Jones is hosting it. You're okay. And Lola is actually a committee with, that consists, well, it's not a committee. It's a, it's a get-together that consists of all of the councils in the county, so there's about 10 different groups. And we all come and discuss what's going on in our towns and anything new, anything that's happening. It's a, it's a very informational for all of us and for everybody else. League of Local Agencies.
I would like to, if I can talk to you later about a speaker.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, for the cards. Yes. Okay, and in the back, there's speaker cards. If anybody would like to speak on, I'm assuming, item A and B on the agenda, then please fill out a speaker card, and you can put it in this little box right here. Sandy will collect them. Okay, so next up is a presentation by Steve, I lost you. There you are. Steve Bryan from the Family Community Resource Center Tobacco Education.
Hi, good evening. I have some packets I wanted to share with you.
Sandy?
So hello, my name's Stephen Bryan. I'm the regional director over South Siskiyou County with the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, which includes the Family and Community Resource Center of Weed. And before I start, I just want to say one quick thing. Senior lunch program wouldn't be as successful as it is without our great volunteers, including Mr. Palafini and the help from Parks and Recs with Mrs. Green. So thank you. So I'm here, I'm a voting member of the Tobacco Education Council here in Siskiyou County, and I'm here to talk to you about the effects of secondhand smoke, especially in outdoor settings, which most people don't think about. In your package, you'll see a lot of useful information that support the need to eliminate smoking environments in outdoor settings. So the Tobacco Education Council, we aim to improve the health of Siskiyou County residents through education and promotion of a tobacco and nicotine-free lifestyle. And in California, approximately 40,000 adults die each year from smoking. The smoking rate in California is 11.7% between 2015 and 2017. In Siskiyou County, the adult smoking rate was 20.3%. Secondhand smoke contains more than 7,000 dangerous chemicals, including 70 that have been identified as cancer-causing chemicals. There is no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure, even outside. Breathing secondhand smoke even for a short time is toxic. Even half an hour of being around secondhand smoke causes heart damage like that of a regular smoking individual. And according to the California Department of Public Health, secondhand smoke exposure has skyrocketed over the last two years. 86% increase in secondhand marijuana exposure, 67% increase in secondhand vape exposure, and over 50% of Californians are still exposed to secondhand tobacco. A public opinion poll that we took with the Tobacco Education Council project in 2018 found that a majority of Siskiyou County residents interviewed reported being exposed to secondhand smoke and identified exposure at the following outdoor locations, including parks, outside of public buildings, concerts, restaurants, sidewalks, and sides of streets. Secondhand smoke can travel over 20 feet once exhaled. Secondhand smoke has a higher concentration of toxic, cancer-causing chemicals than smoke inhaled through a cigarette filter. Children and babies are most at risk for adverse health effects related to secondhand smoke exposure, and those exposed to secondhand smoke are more likely to suffer from, our children. They suffer infant death syndrome, bronchitis and pneumonia, ear infections, asthma attacks. Adults suffer from lung cancer, heart disease, and stroke, and breathing problems. Tobacco-related monetary costs include total annual healthcare costs in the U.S. of $226 billion. Annual healthcare expenditure solely for secondhand smoke exposure is $6.99 billion. In California, the annual healthcare cost directly caused by smoking is $13.29 billion. These amounts do not include healthcare costs caused by exposure to secondhand smokes, smoking caused fires, smokeless tobacco use, or cigar and pipe smoking. And the environmental impact of this is tobacco product waste contains many of the same toxins and carcinogens found in tobacco products. Up to 2/3 of every smoked cigarette is discarded on the ground, and the toxic waste ends up in the streets and in drains and in water. Waste from e-cigarette products can contain plastics, nicotine, and hazardous lithium ion batteries. In 2017 alone, 39 wildfires in California were caused by discarded cigarettes. California statewide smoke-free air laws and restrictions include it's prohibited within 20 feet of entrances, exits, or operable windows of a public building, which includes state, county, and city buildings. Smoking is prohibited within 25 feet of TOT lots and playgrounds or recreational areas specifically designed for use by children and within 250 feet of a youth sports event or related activity which athletes up to 18 years of age are present. Smoking is prohibited within state parks and state coastal beaches. Siskiyou County secondhand smoke protections, Mount Shasta is the only city within Siskiyou County to have an outdoor smoke-free policy that prohibits smoking at public events, recreation areas, outdoor dining areas, and sidewalks within the smoke-free district of downtown Mount Shasta. Weed does prohibit the smoking at the Weed City Skate Park at Lincoln Park, but that is the only area within city limits that is smoke-free. So we'd like to encourage the council to look at your smoking policies within the city and hopefully adopt either a smoke-free parks throughout the city, maybe a smoke-free zone in downtown. And the Tobacco Education Council can provide signs and meet with you on how we could move forward with these. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Steve.
I got, I have the signs, and they are up in all of our parks now.
Okay.
I cannot because the...
Is it Jade?
Yeah.
Jade's here with me tonight.
Okay, yes. And so they sent them to us, and we do have them.
Okay, great. So did Parks and Recs adopt that as a policy?
I don't know that we adopted it as one of our policies formally.
Well, thank you for putting the signs up. That's a great start, so.
Mayor, I think we addressed this problem several years ago, probably not to the full extent that you're asking. But we did flyers out to kids so that they're, actually to the parents, so that they would know that there's no smoking at all, kids' bus stops, because we did have that issue. We, I think, believe all of these, the bus stops themselves for adults are all posted with non-smoking signs. We short, we did stop short of doing any kind of law ordinance or mandate for that, feeling that, again, with this particular situation, that education would serve us better than mandates in our neighborhood, so.
I enjoy your stats. Can you send that to our, to our city manager or our mayor so we can have those numbers?
Yeah, they're all in your packets, too.
But I think we should also revisit whether those signs are still up, still down, send out new flyers, because they seem to get, well, after two, three years, you know what happens. Everybody knows what happens, so.
Does the Resource Center have flyers for that?
Yeah, we have lots of information, because we're part of the Education Council for Tobacco. So we do a lot of promotions on that. We include it in our mailings and literature in the center. We promote it at events in the county. But educational along with ordinance might be a good way to go to, just throwing that in there.
Just throwing that out there.
But I appreciate the council's support, so thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and I want to make a comment about that Monday's lunch. What also contributes to that is in the city of Weed, if you shop at any of the stores here, we have a quarter penny sales tax that comes back to the city, and it is, part of it is for senior services. And that's what, that money is what's purchasing those lunches for the seniors on Mondays.
Absolutely.
And the senior bus, which takes them there.
Absolutely. And we're doing exercise and bingo, and they're loving that, too, so. We'd like to see all the smiling faces on Monday.
And in my thank yous, I did forget to mention the community center, Kim, and the management, so I do apologize for that. No, it's not okay.
They don't really do anything.
Well, you support.
You have a facility. That's pretty big support.
Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation.
No, thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. All right. Too many things here. All right, moving forward, we will go to our regular agenda. Item... Right. Item A, council will consider second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number 464-2021, Feeding of Feral Cats. I think I want to start this off by, when I was, when I ran for city council five years ago, I read something that said, "If you ever want somebody to talk bad about you that doesn't know you, just run for city council." And I have seen numerous things on social media that Mayor Tabalero wants to kill all the cats. So just for one thing, I was driving New Year's Day, so we all know what New Year's Day could look like in Weed, down Main Street, right near Inez, in front of the thrift store, and there was something in the middle of the road. I did not know what it was. And as I got closer to it, it was probably a four-week-old black kitten. That as I got up to it, it ran off to the side of the street, and I looked at it, and it looked at me, and that's when I said, "Well, I can't do that." And so I pulled off to the side of the road, and I, it ran into a little alcove, and I went into the alcove, and I couldn't find it. Well, it had climbed up the side of the bricks in the little alcove, and so I plucked it off, plucked it off, and stuck it down in my coat and took it home. And I named it Peter Parker, because that's Spider-Man's name. And my husband told me that I couldn't keep it for two weeks. He said, "Get rid of it," until he went and named it Timmy, because he had some, he's got some kind of a bad leg. Then I also lost three cats in the bowls fire, but I have, we adopted an older cat from Southern Oregon Humane, and I always have to own an orange cat, so I do have Winston Churchill, my red-headed cat. So I, and I don't know any of the people that have posted this, which clearly, if I don't know them, I'm assuming they don't know me well enough to say that Mayor Tabalero would like to kill the cats. But I also know that when I ran for this position, that was something that was going to happen. And I'm not good with it, but I'm good with that. But that's how I want to start this whole thing out, is whoever's writing that, clearly you don't know me, and I will go from there. Thank you for that. You're welcome. So Sandy, do we have... Oh, Justin. Oh, Justin, thank you.
So I'll be doing most of the talking tonight in place of city manager, Tim Rundle. So in May of this year, we were, had residents approach the council out of public comments regarding feral cat problems in their neighborhood. Residents returned again in June and again asked for assistance with the ongoing problem of feral cat colonies in their neighborhood. At the direction of council, staff had developed two ordinances which were presented in August, and council decided to go with the no-feeding of the cats. That's where we're at, and that's how we got to this point tonight. The other one being the permit process for a TNR with regulation from the city. Obviously, that has a whole separate set of issues for staff to deal with if that were the route that you guys had gone. So what I'm going to do is, okay, start out with a PowerPoint that was created by the city manager. I will, I'm familiar with some of this information. I've, I've read more about cats in the last month than I hope I ever have to again. This was created by him with information that he gathered, one from various locations, fishing wildlife, various studies, and I don't want to get into the studies. I know for every study, there's a counter-study. But this is also a personal interview that he has had with PETA. So some of this information did come from them, and I believe as part of your packet, you were provided with a, some information that they provided to us. Okay, so moving forward. There is a difference between stray and feral cats. For the most part, we are talking about feral cats and feral cat colonies. A stray cat is one who lived indoors and socialized with people at some point in her life, their life, excuse me, but has left or lost their home, or was abandoned and no longer is regular human contact. Over time, a stray cat can become a feral as their contact with humans dwindles. A stray cat may be socialized enough to allow people to touch it, but it will become less socialized or even feral if it spends too much time without the positive interaction of humans. Under the right circumstances, a stray cat can also become a pet once again, and I'm sure we've all had that. I've had it. I've taken stray cats, I wouldn't call them feral cats, and taken them in, got them fixed, found them homes. Everybody has that experience in their life, I'm pretty sure, most people do. Under the right circumstance, a stray cat can also become a pet cat, we read that, and can re-acclimate. They may be frightened and wary after spending time outside and away from people. The feral cats, a feral cat, based on the information that was gathered from various sources, is defined as any cat that lives permanently outside of a domestic home and is not owned and cared for by a typical companion animal or pet. As a result, having been born feral, abandoned by an owner, or rendered homeless, wild, or stray by other means. And that is the definition that council has placed within this defining a feral cat for the ordinance, which is what we are talking about. Feral cat is unsocialized outdoor cat who has either never had any physical contact or that contact has diminished over time and is no longer accustomed to it. Most feral cats are fearful of people and are not likely to ever become a lapcat or enjoy living indoors. Kittens born to feral cats can be socialized at an early age and adopted into indoor homes. Most experts do not, in general, recommend trying to socialize a feral cat over four months of age. Socializing is time-consuming, especially for older kittens, results not guaranteed. So how did we get here? Multiple complaints. Now, in reaching out to the people that were here in May and June, some of them had hesitation over coming tonight because of the attacks that they've been receiving, mainly over social media, but also in public. I want to, I want to point out, though, that this didn't just start in May and June. I went back through our cat system, and in December of 2020, we received a complaint regarding this neighborhood feral cat colony. But it wasn't the feral cats necessarily, it was the feeding location of the feeding station, the ongoing feeding particularly behind two people's homes when they had asked the people to stop and they hadn't. My community service officers reached out to Nicole Twork of Shasta Cats, and she was not the one doing the feeding, but she is the head of the Shasta Cats, I believe, and advised them of the complaint. Had that issue been addressed then, we probably wouldn't be here tonight. It has continued on. Just as of yesterday, I drove by the residences that started this complaint, and there was cat food dumped on the ground behind their residence. We'll get to some pictures later, but there are kittens right there in that area. One of the residents allowed me to go into their yard and look. I took pictures of the dead grass, cause they have grass all around their house except for in the back corner, approximately ten by five, there was feces and dead grass caused by the cats. So multiple complaints over several months. We have increasing human population, rural development, urbanization brings more and more cats. We have reduced willingness to euthanize, this is not just locally, but this is across the country. Ineffectiveness of adoption and euthanasia-only programs. Social changes towards animal rights, promotion of feral cat colonies, and abandoning animals is still tolerated by many, and low social legal status of cats in many people's perception. Myths about feral cats. If well-fed, they won't kill. A well-fed cat is pictured here killing a rumped warbler above. I don't have the source for this picture, but going to this and away from the original neighborhood that people, that's drawing the attention here, if you go up by the college, I have people that are feeding cats. I have people who are bird fans, and I have had much greater conflicts between those people than I have had in this, in the Angel Valley area, in which they're standing out there yelling names at each other because the cat, which is being fed three houses down and has a very nice, actually, feeder, it's not typical of the other ones where they're just dumping food on the ground, is sitting under the birdhouses and bird feeder waiting for the birds. So it's not just that neighborhood. I want to point that out to people, that it's not Angel Valley alone that's having this issue. It's downtown area, it's the college, it's the high school area. I actually found an incident from 2009 regarding people fighting over the, over a cat, and it wasn't feral. Somebody thought they were feeding a feral or stray cat, and it was the neighbors on the next streets, and they were fighting because they're accusing them of trying to steal the cat. So these are, it's every neighborhood in town. Smormous, they are territorial and exclude others. They are just like the native predators and have a niche. They're not like the native predators. U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the Smithsonian accredit them, domestic cats worldwide, with the extinction of up to sixty-three species. And you can look that up online, that's, that's actual document that they've put out. Their numbers will decline quickly under a TNR. So that's a myth that some will argue against, but that is what, that's, that's PETA, that's coming from PETA. The reproductive potential of a six-year study out of Santa Clara County. We know cats produce litters, and they do it very effectively. I'm not going to get into this, but the main thing is, is the average female will have five-point-two-five litters, twenty-two-point-three kittens, with approximately half of those surviving over two months. The main thing here is you see survivors are prolific breeders and live about three years. That's, that's going to come up as far as TNR programs go. The sad reality of many TNR programs, and this isn't, this isn't every, there are successful programs that are highly funded, highly staffed, Stanford being one. I know some of the, some of the people in the audience are going to point to Tulare County. Tulare County, the Visalia Cat Coalition is heavily funded. They have so many staff and so much funding, they actually have eight board members overseeing that program. I will also point out that the city of Visalia's budget, just for their facility, animal facility, is $570,000. That's half of my police budget for everything, so. Many TNRs are not in compliance with the AVMA guidelines. No requirement that cats not go back to wildlife lands, records aren't kept or care given after they're trapped and released. No signage of formal education program, which is important to, you know, encourage people to not add to the existing population. Any feral and abandoned cat, not just established colony, wait, any feral and abandoned cat, not just established colonies, and re-abandonment laws. I'm not sure where he was going with that, but. No follow-up to determine the fate of the colony or individuals, no adoption requirements. Going back to the AVMA guidelines, they actually release a policy every year on TNRs. And if you read that policy, their policy states the goal of every TNR should be reduction through attrition. That doesn't, and they, and that doesn't mean that, you know, you're euthanizing all the cats. That means those that are not able to be, the sick ones and those that are not able to be rehabilitated possibly may be euthanized by a qualified individual, but the goal, ultimate goal, needs to be reducing that population. And that goes with the no firm commitment to elimination. Is it legal? So these are, these are questions posed to, many posed to TNR programs. Does veterinary client-patient relationship exist? Now, what he's talking about here, I believe, is, so for me, as a law enforcement officer, if I go into a certain situation, I'm constantly, am I responsible for this person after I leave? And that's what some people question on this, and that's what PETA questions. Is it, if you'll notice in the document they provided, they don't call it release, they call it re-abandonment, because they're saying you've established a special relationship with that animal to take care of it at that point. Is it legal to abandon animals? No, it's not. And again, they're, they're asking, are you re-abandoning the animal and are guilty of abandonment yourself? Does this apply to re-abandonment? Which basic premise? Is it an oral contract with the TNR to take care of these animals, or is there some sort of legal obligation? Most public lands are managed for wildlife. That's a unique thing here when we're looking at other programs, because we do have a much greater urban wildland interface than most cities do. Known impacts on sensitive species violate federal and state laws and local statutes, misdemeanor, and felony. Are they damaging prey? They're opportunistic animals. They prey on native birds, mammals, reptiles, and amphibians. Subsidized predators can reach very high densities, second only in habitat loss, the negative impact of, from humans on wildlife. Impacts most severe extinction on island habitats, endemic ground, dwelling, threatened and invaded species, and that again goes to TNRs in certain areas may have a greater impact on threatened species because of their location. Impacts on wildlife per the Coleman Temple and Craven Study, feral cats average at least fourteen kills a year, some may kill as many as 1,000. Estimated 39 million birds, that's a Wisconsin study. Subsidized, so prey is density independent, which means you're, you're helping them out by feeding them. Outnumbered all other mesopredators combined in Wisconsin and outcompete, kill approximately 1 billion mammals, birds, herbs, et cetera, per year in the USA. If you go outside the USA, I, I don't want to get into this, but Australia has a very bad feral cat problem, and they have gone to the complete opposite of TNR and are actually actively euthanizing in some states, offering bounties for the cats. They, going back to the Australia, they estimate one, 1 billion birds killed by the, by domestic cats. New ordinance does not prohibit feeding stray community cats on your own property. If you're putting a bowl on your back porch and the, and you've got a cat that's showing up, that's not what this is about. It's about maintaining these large feral colonies that don't go away. Feeding your neighbor's cat with their permission, hopefully, on your or their property. The new ordinance does prohibit feeding feral cats on private or public property. Private property is the key here, because we do have, just this afternoon, within the last two hours, I spoke to somebody who did not believe it was, they, they don't think that it's a bad idea to go on somebody's property to feed a cat. I, I could not understand their reasoning on that. They think that it, trust, and I use the word trespassing, they thought that that was okay. I don't understand that reasoning. Make it unlawful for any person within the city to intentionally provide food, water, or other forms of sustenance to a feral cat or feral cat colony. A feral cat is defined, once again, as a cat that lives permanently outside of a domestic home and is not owned and cared for as a typical companion animal or pet. As a result of having been born feral, abandoned by an owner, or rendered homeless, wild, or stray by any other means. Do you have the pictures? So these are just some recent pictures. This one was taken at the end of July. The only traps I saw appear were when this became an issue to the council. This trap is outside of a, it's actually a long, ongoing feral cat colony that's been existing for 20 years. You can see the feed bowls there. If you can go to the next picture, please. You can see the trap at the time. There it is. The trap didn't have a door, so I, I'm not, I'm not a big hunter trapper, but I do know the trap's gonna need a door, and the food should typically be inside if you're trying to catch the cat. At the same time, there was another trap that was set. I don't have a picture of that one. That one was on railroad property. We did have some issues there because going back, it's private property and railroad corp doesn't necessarily want people wandering around their property. The trap was allowed to be placed because they told me they were actively trying to catch some kittens, and that would be the whole purpose of a TNR, so I don't know if they ever caught the kittens. I do, did notice just yesterday that the food bowl is back, but there's no trap, so I don't know what the status is on that. And I believe that colony is expanding from this one, just several hundred yards over to a new location. If I could have the next picture, please. This here is behind a business down on Main Street, and this goes back to the original complaint, this, even though it wasn't on Main Street. The individual that put this out was asked by one of the local business building owners to please don't put the food out at this location, and was advised of the possibility of a new ordinance. That individual picked up the bowls and left, and then within a day or two, the bowls were back. At this time, those, the food has been removed at least three times since then, and it's the same individual. I have not spoken to this, he's supposedly a participant in the program. I've spoken to several members, and they're usually, they're nice, but this person apparently is very confrontational to some of the, some of the folks, and that's also been an issue. But after you've been asked not to, and you've returned, I know of at least three times, I could see how a property owner would be upset. If I could have the next picture. This is the same location, and on the other side of the, the tank, again, more bowls, and the flats are basically six-pack flats that hold four six-packs with cat food dumped into them. If I could have the next one. This is over behind the Mercantile where the trip, the trap was located earlier. Can we zoom in on that at all? Not sure which photo this one is. Oh, yeah, so, so you can't see it very well in this picture. It shows up much better on the phone, but that little white stripe underneath the tank there is a cat, and there were kittens there yesterday. If I could have the next one. You can see the trays there, they're, they're like pizza trays. So going back to the Main Street business, that area was cleaned up by one of the property owners to try to eliminate any way to hide the cat food. So what has been done is the cat food's been moved over behind another building, approximately 20 feet away, and was, you can't see it very well, there's a flat underneath the yellow shopping cart, and there's a flat back there, back under the weeds, and that bowl had had wet food in it. While I was taking this picture, one of the, some employees from a neighboring business came out, and they complained about the ongoing smell of urine and feces. Now, this is the neighborhood where the original complaint came from. As you can see to the bottom left there, the cat food was just dumped in a pile on the ground, and down in the distance, you can see a cat leaving another feeding station. And again, this is right behind the people who originally brought this to my attention in May and asked what they could do, and they were directed to contact council for further guidance. If I could have the next one. This one won't show up very well, but if you can, if you could zoom in like you can on a, on a phone or a camera, you'd see a set of eyes through that crack in the wood there. There are kittens right there, fairly new kittens. They were feeding as I got there, and they went in into that little gap there, and they were just waiting for me to leave. If I could have the next one, please. This is the backyard. I tried to, tried to keep the residents anonymity the best I could, but you can see what, what's going on with her, her lawn in the back. The lawn is green all the way around the house except for that location, and I didn't, we, I didn't submit the pictures to review, but there, there were feces there, so. And we're back behind the, the Merc, I think this is the one with the, with the cat, if you could zoom, zoom in. So there's a cat there with kittens. She ends up running under the, under the sill plate there, but there's another one back in the back, and that, that will be the next picture, but they were feeding yesterday. So speaking of this one over here, having, having lived and worked in this block for 20 years, that colony has existed the entire time. Multiple attempts have been made to reduce that population, and the only time I've seen a difference was one, when we eliminated their ability to go underneath the police department. They used to reside under the police department, and this thought that cats, these cats are happy and living happy lives, it's not. If you had that colony living under, you would know what's occurring every day. The cat fights, the dead animals. The cat fights, the dead animals, it's not a happy life that they're living under there. We were able to finally stop, it got to the point where we had to block it off, because they were getting trapped under there in certain locations, and we have expensive wiring as well. So, they moved over primarily to the Mercantile and don't come over here anymore. But just yesterday, staff was watching the cats fight in the parking lot amongst each other. So, that's where we're at, and that's how we got here.
Chief, can I, chief, can I add one point of clarification?
Sure.
Great. So, technically, as written, the ordinance does broadly prohibit feeding of feral cats on private or public property, which would reach an individual on their own property feeding feral cats. The intent of the city and, and the chief's enforcement of this ordinance is not to enforce it against individuals feeding feral cats on their private, private property. What the city is concerned about, based on the nuisance conditions described, is a situation where a business owner, for example, allows folks to come on and feed feral cats on their property, creating the, the type of conditions for adjacent property owners we just discussed. So, it, what chief is speaking about is, is the intent of, of how the ordinance will be enforced against individual property owners. If that's something that the city council would like clarified, either in the ordinance or through other means, we can discuss means to do that, maybe at the end of the, the meeting.
To touch back on to, I'm sorry, to touch back on to the businesses and private property. We do have one at South Wheat. It's a very extensive colony that's existed out there. We reached out to the property owners, speaking of property owners, they're owned by a corporation out of Oregon, and this is on the McDonald's property. When we reached out to them and advised them, they had three cat houses, and somebody, per the construction crew that brought it to my attention, that there were multiple people coming every day to drop cat food off, they were, they responded to us by email, saying, you know, we were not aware of that. We knew there was a problem when we bought the franchise. We thought we had eliminated that, and we will direct our staff to get rid of that colony, or not the colony, but the, the dog houses and tarps that had been placed out there. They do not want that on their property. They weren't aware that it was still there, because it's been moved down into some bushes. And there it is there, yes.
If, if there was an infraction, and they were cited for whatever reason, and it happened to be kind of against what we're defining as the, the policy itself on the, on how law enforcement would interpret this, they could appeal to the city council for relief, right? Or to city manager?
Well, it depends how it was charged. If it was charged as an infraction, I'm not sure that they're, I'm not terribly, you can speak credit to this.
So, that, that also came up. So, the way it's written is that it's a misdemeanor. Under, under Chapter Nine, which is most of the public nuisances, all of those, in the municipal code, almost all of them are mis, are misdemeanors. The city attorney retains the option to charge those, if necessary, as a misdemeanor. What we do have is, we have a city ordinance that allows us to administratively cite somebody, and that is how most municipal codes are enforced within the city. I can't remember the last time I wrote somebody a misdemeanor municipal code violation. So, it gets cited actually as an infraction, and get, and there is an appeal process to that. We often have that with the animal permits that people must have for chickens.
It is not a fixed dollar amount, is that correct?
The, the misdemeanor is up to, I believe it says $500.
It's, yeah, correct. So, so the municipal code section 1.20.050 provides that, basically, any ordinance violation, which is punishable as a misdemeanor, is actually going to be prosecuted as an infraction unless I decide otherwise. I don't, I don't anticipate doing that in this situation. Infractions themselves are different from administrative citations, which is a third option, which is, as the chief said, the one that we most commonly pursue. It's really, it's an administrative procedure as, as opposed to a court procedure. So, infractions, if we chose that route, would be, I believe, $50 for the first violation, 100 for the second, and $250 for the, each additional one. More likely, it would be administrative citations, which I believe were, we are updating today as well, but those, I believe, are 100, 200, and 500. So, for second and third, and all subsequent citations issued. And that has an, an appeal process, yes.
Right. So, that, that fine system would, is on the agenda as well. It's on there for second reading. I will state, the last time I can remember somebody getting cited for both a unlicensed animal and an unvaccinated rabies shot for a dog through the county, and they, I believe part of the problem was they didn't address it when they should have, it ended up being over $600. So, the $500 seems like a lot, but if you get one for an unregistered, unvaccinated dog, potentially, you're looking at much more than $500. The court fees are what they are, and I, I, you know, we don't, we don't typically go through the county court, we do the administrative process.
Yeah. Easier for everybody involved.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any more questions for Chief Mayberry? You're good?
Thank you for that. Background of clarity.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So, comments from the public?
Madam Mayor, were you planning on discussing the limitations stated in the ordinance, or in the, in the agenda? I'm sorry, on time?
How many, Sandy, how many do we have?
13.
Is there a time limit for those?
Three minutes. So...
It's about 30 minutes.
You'll call their names? You'll have three minutes. And I, we can listen to all 13? Yeah, try not to repeat what somebody else has said.
Nicole Dwork, Saving Shasta Cats.
And when you come up, can you give your name and address into the microphone?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Nicole Dwork. My address is 5630 Dunsmere Avenue in Dunsmere, California. Can you hear me? Yeah, is it too loud?
Nope. No, we have to check with him.
So, I have comments prepared, but in response to your comments, I think I might change a few things. One thing I can say is, I think what you offered is not what I would consider solutions-based. I want to tell you who I am, so I told you my name, but I am the founder and president of Saving Shasta Cats. We're a nonprofit cat rescue that was formed in 2015, and we serve all cats, pets and community cats and feral cats in Siskiyou County. So, you described how we got here. I actually don't think you described how we got here. How it started for us is a Wheat resident on Jackson Street in Angel Valley named Karen Keating called me out three years ago, and begged to help her with the feral cat problem in her area. So, I went out, and I offered her food to feed the cats, and I offered to spay and neuter as many of the cats as I could. She told me I would not be able to bring them back, and I said, "Well, that's what TNR is, trap, neuter, and release, and you bring them back." Because at that time, I didn't have a place to take all of those cats. So, I want you to know, at the outset, this was not our issue or our problem, and I came in to assist her. I also paid for her personal cat's vet bill. And then, at that point, when we weren't getting cats fixed fast enough to her liking, she decided to, I think, make complaints to you and to turn the entire block, sort of against the efforts that we were making. So, I just want you to know where it stemmed from. And from that point, we started feeding feral cats in Wheat, because so many people from the community called us and said, "There are so many cats, and they're starving, and they need help." And so, I have great vet records for you to show you how many cats I have indeed spayed and neutered. And I can tell you that most of the cats we've spayed and neutered in Siskiyou County are in Wheat. And most of the calls I receive from concerned citizens are from Wheat. So, I actually feel like we're doing quite a lot to ameliorate the problem, and what I would love is for the council to work with us in a solutions-based approach. Now, PETA is not the only authority. Allicat Allies, the Humane Society of the United States, oh, the National Feline Research Council, they all have a different stance than, than PETA does. And they believe that TNR works. So, I see I'm running out of time. I have more to say, but I hope my other members will speak.
Hopefully, the rest of, Sandy, who's next? I do have a question about, did you, you paid her vet bill because one of the feral cats injured hers?
No. She, no, I didn't, no. It has nothing to do with it all. It was her pet, and she couldn't afford it, and I offered to help her.
Okay. I had a cat years ago that was killed by a feral cat colony.
Yeah, that had nothing, and I love that you're a pet, pet lover, cat lover. I think that's fantastic.
Better people realize that. Sandy, who's next?
Dr. Rachel, I do not want to mispronounce your last name.
It's Raquel.
Raquel. Unfortunately, Dr. Shinoni, I, my name is Sarah Montgomery, 5734, Antelope Court. I am speaking on behalf of Dr. Raquel Shinoni, and with that, I will also be speaking on behalf of Dr. Maureen Baker Sampson, veterinarian, medical director of Mount Shasta Animal Hospital; Dr. Tom Sampson, veterinarian; Dr. David Stroshine, veterinarian; Dr. Harmony McPherson, veterinarian; and as Dr. Shinoni, as well as myself, as the practice manager of Mount Shasta Animal Hospital. So, I am speaking on behalf of six, six people, myself included, and I have written a letter, and all of our veterinarians have signed it, for the council here to also have a copy of. So, "To whom it may concern, we are writing this letter in support of Saving Shasta Cats and its founder Nicole Dwork. Mount Shasta Animal Hospital works with Nicole on a day-to-day basis with her rescue organization. We recognize the value of the work that Nicole and SSC, as I will continue to call it, provide, not only to our community, but also to those of underfunded feline owners," as she mentioned, Karen Keating. SSC and their volunteers work around the clock securing veterinarian care for felines throughout this county. We've performed over 350 spay and neuters for Nicole since 2016. These have been, that, these have been presented by Nicole. Nicole's dedication to these felines is one of the most admirable traits about her. She is fully committed to their health, minimizing and maintaining feral populations here in Siskiyou County. Nicole is an advocate for all animals, and she ensures that they're getting health services, nutrition, and homes when feasible, and building rapport with these felines that allows them to trust her and her volunteers, thereby making it safer not only for SSC, the general public, but also for our animal hospital staff when handling these animals. We, as a community, are very fortunate to have somebody of her caliber who's willing to do the hard work and advocate for spay-neuters, and is also available to secure the funding to make this happen. Nicole is never not working on getting funding from around the country, not just money from locals, by the way, and this is to help resolve the issues that our community has presented to her. Nicole's expenditures at Mount Shasta Animal Hospital are not small. 2020 to current date saw Nicole spend over $75,000 on feline care alone. Now, this does not even tap into the other animal hospitals and clinics that SSC travels to due to the volume of, the volume that she serves. These are not only felines brought underneath SSC, but, as previously mentioned, private, private owners too. Nicole has likely been the reason many of our communities have not been overrun by feral cats. She has reduced the number of litters born here in Siskiyou County in immeasurable ways and helped control rampant diseases that comes with that, too. Mount Shasta Animal Hospital is committed to assisting Nicole on her mission of getting our feral populations under control. This takes time, an open line of communication with SSC, veterinarian staff, as well as veterinarians. As I look here today at our clients on the city council, many of you already know...
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's your three minutes. So, hopefully, somebody else can finish it.
I've got, this is for six different doctors.
Yeah.
And so, I'm gonna finish.
Thank you.
I, I need to finish. Thank you.
No, it doesn't work that way. But thank you for that offer. So, thank you, Sarah.
Okay.
Who's next?
Could I ask one question?
Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me ask one. One question. You mentioned that $75,000 was spent.
$76,000, $75,000, yes.
Okay. How much did the Vets Office contribute to that?
So, Nicole has, has had discounted pricing up until it was the beginning of 20, or the middle of 2020, I believe it was. So, the veterinarians themselves have taken substantial loss on their medical and professional time in order to, to do that.
Okay. That's good. Thanks, Sarah.
You mentioned to assist the organization. Who else is out there that can assist people, organizations? Is there any other people that can assist that aren't doing, are in communication with?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what your question is.
I'm asking about assistance. You mentioned that there, people are assisting Nicole's organization?
Correct. Nicole has, has a great source of funding, yes.
Are there any people that are, that are maybe, are interested, or that we don't, haven't heard about in all the news? I'm just wondering, because you mentioned to assist that organization.
So, I'm not familiar with Nicole's funder, who her, who her funders are. That would be a great question for her specifically. I do know that we allow net billing for her, which is rare in the veterinarian world, because people get stiff. But Nicole is constantly working on it, getting checks in from around the country. Most recently, I know it was like a very large donor from the state of Texas that was helping fund and pay for this.
Thank you. Just one, any financial, because a, as I understand, that it's been going on for many years, and the finance is a large amount, so I wanted to see what else.
It's an enormous amount. When I tried to run the reports for Nicole, we were probably close to about $400,000 since 2016, approximately, that she has funded for the county.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I do want to just mention that the, the doctors really did take quite a bit of time to write this, just so you know, and I am gonna give it to them. I think that the bigger part of this, too, is that...
You can give that to Sandy.
Yes. There's been zero comments, nobody in this council or from the city has reached out to veterinarians. Nobody.
Yeah. Well, it, it's hard to reach out to veterinarians these days anyway, but that's, Sandy, who's next?
Siskiyou Humane Society, Kim Latos.
We can't speak for her. You can't get an appointment with her.
Sorry, guys. I'm Kim Latos, director of the Siskiyou Humane Society. I've been there 16 years. Hi, guys. Let's everybody take a breath. Woo, there's some heat going on in here tonight.
Kim, spell your last name, please.
L-A-T-O-S.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I don't do social media either, so that's why, that's why. I'm just kind of a little confused as why we get three minutes and you get 30. I'm just, I, hey, hey, hey!
No! You will, you will clear the room if we have that. That will not be, because he works for us. That's why. Thank you. Go ahead.
I was just, I was just curious.
You have kids, but you, okay.
Not me.
So, it's okay, let's everybody take a breath again. I haven't received any calls at the Humane Society from any council members, from anybody in the public, or anything, any complaints about anything going on here. I know we have worked closely with animal control in the city of Wheat for, since I've been on for 16 years. We don't do cats, is all I ever get, and so they refer, they refer them to us. I like numbers, too, Stacy. Numbers are fun. Did you know 70,000 puppies and kittens are born every day? 70,000 puppies and kittens. 10,000 people are born every day. There's not enough homes. People are gonna abandon their cats. I, I really did not come prepared. I'm gonna admit that, because I was not expecting the, the presentation you gave. And I, I wish I would have brought my original notes, because it had a lot to do and, and counter, you know, counteractive to what the chief was saying here. Cats, you know, I agree, cats can be disgusting. I don't want to live where cats are pooping and peeing, and, I mean, a lot of you don't. I, I get that. We get that. We are, the Humane Society is there not only for animals, we're there for the people that take care of them, for their owners, and even for those that are, their lives are impacted by them. I would really like to see, what I would like to see, and what, what I am here for, what I'm asking, is you, for you to table this agenda item until your next meeting. And this will allow you to review the packet that you've received earlier this afternoon from Nicole. And she made me aware that you received a nice packet that has a lot of interesting information. Stuff I didn't hear in this presentation was the vacuum effect. Huge, huge. And as Nicole said, there are other organizations and agencies that have their own studies and proven results how TNR does work. Again, I've been in this community for 16 years. TNR does work, but there needs to be communication between the government officials, between the, the public. It's not us against them. It's not us against them. We're all here together. And we're all working on this. Why does there have to be an us and them? I urge those that feel that cats are a problem to, to call us and, and, and ask questions or do their own research. Um, community cats exist because of generations of human action and inaction. Therefore, humanely addressing the needs of these cats and implementing programs which help prevent their reproduction are the responsibility of the communities in which they live. And eradicating, euthanizing, just, as you say, the sick ones, I agree. I get that. Um, there's things that can be done. There's, there's solutions to this. And the way it's being handled right now and with this ordinance is, is only going to cause some really, really serious, ugly deaths out there. And I don't think you guys want that, Anya. These cats are gonna die from starvation if you ban this. And it's not gonna be pretty, but I, there's ways to fix this. There's ways to work on this. Thank you very much, Kim.
No.
Attorney David Hicks.
Good evening. My name is David Hicks. I am a licensed attorney in California. I want to thank Mr. Reed for taking some time to chat with me earlier. He and I might respectfully.
I'm sorry, and where do you live?
Dunsmere.
Okay.
He and I, he and I, um, may respectfully disagree with each other, but we don't have cognitive dissonance. I liked what Ken said. So, these, these are, you know, we were all scrambling. We didn't know about this ordinance until just a couple of days ago. And we're all like going, what? And what are we gonna do? So, I said, uh, well, let me look at the ordinance, and I saw, looked at it really quickly, and I saw a couple of things. Now, I'm a qualified expert witness on legislative intent, among other things. In my forty-five years as a lawyer and a pro temp Superior Court Judge in five counties in the state. Now, I'm more like, uh, retired, hopefully. So, these are a couple of problems I have. Where I'm going with these is to ask you at this time to either take no further action on this ordinance as drafted or to exempt nonprofits and their volunteers from it, such as the Humane Society and Saving Shasta Cats, or go back to the drawing board and invite help from these community partners who have served this city so well, and talk to them and work on a solution that, so here's, here, real quickly are the problems, I think, with the ordinance. It, the definition of feral cats is provided under state law in Food and Agricultural Code Section 3175 2.5, and I don't think you could, your, I think state has occupied the field in this and that you can't have a new definition of feral cats as you find in your ordinance. I think that some domestic cats might be swept up in enforcement activity based on how this has been drafted. And certainly, it would infringe on the right of people to actually, it's a state right to own feral cats. For example, barn cats. Nicole provides lots of cats that she rescues, fixes, and then gets requests from, uh, folks with ranches and stuff to, to give them barn cats. And also, um, Penal Code Section 599D makes it a crime to euthanize an adoptable animal. So, and you can't euthanize them, and you cannot euthanize any animal that can actually be treated. There's no provision in your ordinance for getting these animals, if they have problems, over to the vet. It just doesn't, there, you're just criminalizing it. So, that's Penal Code 599D. Um, I'm hoping your police team will take a look at that code section.
That's incorrect.
I think enforcing this, uh, it, it's expressed that the intent is just to administratively have hearings, but this ordinance clearly criminalizes it. It threatens people with six months in jail or five hundred dollar fine. Um, the problem with that is, um, well, I want to say one other thing. The DA won't prosecute any of these cases.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Sandy?
Susan Boynton?
Hi there. My name is Susan Boynton. I live up near the railroad tracks on Olive Street.
Okay.
The corner of Olive and Inez. And last year, about this time, I had zero cats. I didn't feed cats. I didn't have cats. I didn't want cats. The next thing I know, I had three or four feral cats give birth to litters underneath my motorhome, underneath my woodpile, underneath my shed. The next thing I know, I have twenty-plus cats in my yard. Three of them were killed by my dogs, which are permanently penned, but they managed to get in there because they were starving to death. And it was horrific having to pick up three dead cats.
I've done that.
Yeah. And then after the cats were dead, these were mother cats, all of their babies started dying out in my yard. So, I had little tiny baby cats I had to pick up and dispose of. This was horrific, okay? I reached out to the Humane Society and, in tears, you know, what am I going to do? And we started a program with her where, um, two cats a week I could bring in, and, but I would have to take them back because that was the solution for feral cats. So, I ended up with a whole yard full. I ended up with about ten cats in my yard, but they were all fixed. And I said, okay, that's pretty good. But then all ten of them disappeared after they were fixed. And I've come to realize, I think they were neighborhood cats. And they come to my house, God only knows why, to have their litters. And I'm stuck with the problem. So, what I want to say to you, I think the problem is not me feeding a cat or preventing it from getting torn up by dogs. I think people need to take responsibility for their animals. Here in Weed, we have a problem because people get their animals, they don't spay or neuter them. I had to do that for them, and I think they've all gone back home now, except for two that just had two litters again in my yard. Now, I have eight kittens to contend with. So, the process starts all over again. And until you revise this, I don't want to go to jail, and I don't want to be fined five hundred dollars every time I feed one of these cats. Okay? That's wrong for me. So, let's do something to amend this so that people, we license, my dogs are all licensed. They all get their shots. And some of those cats that are out there, I'm a little bit afraid of them. I go out in my yard and I've got a cat that's starving. Uh-uh. This is not good because I can get attacked. So, let's do something about that. Let's amend this. Like, uh, Kim was saying, table this. Do some amending. Let's get some licensing going. Let's get some shots going. And let's have people take responsibility. And if I find a cat in my yard that is not licensed, isn't microchipped, or whatever, it needs to be taken away from my yard. Somebody needs to come and get it. I'm seventy-three years old. Enough's enough.
Thank you. Justin? Can you license a cat?
It would be possible. The, so, just, just so we're clear and the audience is clear, there was a second ordinance that was proposed. The council chose to go with this one because we do not have the staffing or the funding to even, the, the other, would require oversight from either city staff or the police department in this permitting process for a, a charitable organization or a TNR program. I don't have that. I have community service officers that also act as animal control. And I'm currently training those, or those community service officers to work as dispatchers because I can't find people to work as dispatchers. So, our animal control budget is four thousand dollars annually. My facility is, is only designed to hold dogs and not that many dogs. So, for me to start a collection and licensing program for cats would be a huge undertaking.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Will a volunteer organization help out? I know that, 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 that opens many possibilities, but many questions of accountability and finance.
So, I, I will say, the Humane Society does help us. We, we refer people to them all the time regarding cats. And, and as far as, again, how we got here, a community member came to me at an event down on Main Street and, and expressed concern over the feral cat colony in the neighborhood. I, again, reiterated, we don't normally deal with cats unless it's a cat bite or, or something like that. And I said, you need to go, we don't have an ordinance for cats, actually. So, they were directed to come to council. We came up with, at council's direction, came up with two separate ordinances at the, we discussed cats at May, the May meeting. We discussed cats at the June meeting, July meeting. Come August, the ordinance were proposed. Nobody was here. Unfortunately, you guys didn't, didn't know about it, but it has been on, we, this is month five now, so.
Um, okay, Sandy, who's next? Thank you.
Grace Roberts?
Hello. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I have.
Grace, your address?
Oh, my physical address or my office address, or both?
Physical.
Uh, 26231 Old Edgewood Weed Road.
Thank you.
I have been a veterinarian for twenty-three years and have served Siskiyou County for that entire time. I have read the feral cat feeding ordinance being proposed, and I am horrified by it. Um, I feel that it is tattamont to animal cruelty. I have done my research and due diligence on this matter. I have contacted my attorney at Wilkie Flurry in Sacramento. Um, they represent all veterinarians that are members of the California Veterinary Medical Association, which are the majority of veterinarians in California. I've also contacted attorney and veterinarian Grant Miller, who is the lawyer for the CVMA. Um, I contacted the Animal Legal Defense Fund and Ashley Mosseri with the Humane Society of the United States. I wanted to find out, first of all, if this ordinance is even legal. Sadly, it is, and the city of Weed can enact it. However, my sources tell me that although other counties have enacted such ordinances due to problems, I, I'm sorry, um, have, have enacted such ordinances, they have mostly all rescinded the ordinance due to problems with enforcing it and legal problems. If the city of Weed thinks that the feral cat problem is just going to go away with not feeding them, I can assure them that this will not happen. Item number one, feral cats are adept at living on their own and can decimate birds and wildlife. They will spread, this is item number two, they will spread feline AIDS and leukemia for people's pet cats that go outside. Item number three, one female unspayed cat can be responsible for producing up to four hundred thousand cats during a lifespan. That's not that that female cat will produce that many, but her offspring will produce that many. Wild animals such as foxes, bobcats, skunks, raccoons will come out after the feral cats and any other cats, even people's pet cats. Um, fighting between feral cats and people's pet cats will increase, increasing the cat bite absence is requiring veterinary care. More cats in the U.S. get rabies every year than dogs. Finally, I believe that the path forward is through education and spay-neuter release program. I support Nicole Dwork and her work. And, um, there are so many grants available for, um, spaying and neuter, neutering that I cannot see, um, any other path forward except for that. Um, we have programs for the, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, doctor.
Paul Shelton?
Hi, my name is Paul Shelton. I'm a resident of Weed, 677 Sullivan Avenue. And, uh, a lot of, what was I gonna say, has been covered, so I won't repeat. But, uh, I came to town after being, uh, a native of Weed. My wife and I retired and last September moved back to Weed, remodeled our home, and we live up in Bel Air. We brought with us proudly a now-two-year-old former feral cat that we were able to adopt around the, around two months old. And so, we're, I guess, we're one of the success stories about feral cats that even the graphic showed that if you get them young enough, you can do some stuff with them. Um, it's more the adult cats that are obviously the problem. Uh, when I first read the ordinance, uh, what it, what dawned on me is that you've got the, you've got the problem of feral cats, but this ordinance doesn't necessarily, necessarily address that because the people who would be fined and/or potentially jailed due to violating the ordinance aren't the people who dropped off the cat, moved away and left the cat, uh, irresponsible and not spaying and neutering their own pets. Uh, I think the problem really is what I call feral owners who have left.
I don't know that anybody's gonna argue with you on that.
Good, good. On the same page, good. Uh, so, what I'd like to see is a solution that really addresses the problem and keep your eye on the ball of the problem are the feral cats. That's the problem. And putting money, effort towards some version that helps with TNR to where they can be spayed, neutered, and released, uh, while, the lady formerly said, trying to keep them healthy up through that process because the interaction with household pets can be problematic too. Um, so, I guess, I, I'm not, I'm not, not in favor of an ordinance of some kind, just that this one would penalize well-meaning people who are, in their mind, just trying to aid in keeping animals alive and, and helping with their welfare. So, whatever we could do toward addressing and keeping the eye, keeping our eye on the real problem of what do we do with the cats? How can we treat that? Uh, the attrition that the slide showed that can happen over time, their lifespan is markedly shorter than a tamed house cat. Uh, and I hate to say, we can rely on that to winnow out over time, God forbid, uh, to where it's a lesser problem if we can get on top of spaying, neutering, and cut the population where they cannot reproduce. Thank you.
Sandy?
Nellie Gordon?
Hi, um, I just, most of what I wanted to say has already been said, but, oh, I'm at Renell Gordon, 605 Stringtown Avenue in Weed, but, um, also, um, I didn't see anything in any of the presentation that said that starvation would help, like, the issue at all. Why would starving them help? They'll still breed. They'll just breed sicker. So, I guess I have more of a question. How's it gonna help?
I, I can respond to that briefly. I don't know if anybody else would, Ryan. Uh, based on what you saw, on, is an unpleasant truth, the fact that they die anyway, a good part of them. So, being, I'm not sure if we're really being any more cruel than Mother Nature already does. That would be my response to that.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you. Sandy, next up?
Marilyn Blankenship?
Marilyn Blankenship, 1460 North Davis Avenue in Weed. Um, I can tell, you guys ever see the pictures of starving animals? That's a really rough, that's inhumane. And to have animals go through this, why not? We have such good resources. Why not table this? Why not try it? And, and instead of them calling the police with the problems, appoint people toward Nicole and the Humane Society too. And instead of, um, turning people that have such care for animals and want to feed them um, into criminals, and, um, and just feeding them isn't gonna help. It, they've got to be spayed and neutered. And Nicole has even told me she's rehomed some. So, if a section has, like this lady, if, if she's being bombarded by these cats, Nicole can even rehome them to barns and where people need mice, you know, um, caught and, and controlled. And so, I think if we, what if we just stopped and stood back a little bit and give this a shot and see how, what a difference she can make? I mean, she's already made a difference, but obviously, it's totally out of control. And, um, why not just try it? And they're, they're willing to do it. They're willing to help, and they, they come in and get involved, and I say, why don't we give her a chance and give the Humane Society a chance and people who love animals? Why don't we just table this for a little bit and Justin can have them call them? So, and see how it goes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Oh, and by the way, we had, we trapped two totally feral wild cats, and they ended up, um, family pets. One lived in the bathroom for six months, but got used to the hairdryer and, and, and we loved her, and she lived to be seventeen. And one was totally feral and out hunting, and we trapped him and had him neutered, and then we fed him in the bushes. then we fed him in the bushes. And he came out and rubbed on my leg and we built him a little feral cat house and-
And you had him spayed and neutered?
We had him neutered, yeah.
There we go.
Yep, and it makes a difference.
Well, yeah, I'd spay and neuter everything.
If everyone could do that, we'd be in a different situation. My understanding is from the last 10 years that those organizations have not been there to support because they're overwhelmed.
Well, why don't we give them a chance? Why don't we give them a chance?
Yeah.
They're obviously interested and they're working hard and-
Okay. Thanks, Marilyn.
Jim Striegel?
Hi, Jim Striegel, 2601 North Old Stage Road. I understand this is a problem for some of the people in town, a few people. This is kind of the wrong way to go. It struck me immediately as inhumane. It kind of, I saw a parallel with this law and the one they just passed in Georgia where it's a crime to bring food and water to people standing in line to vote. It just seemed like a cruel way to go about it. It's, I gave, I sent you guys emails, which apparently you got. There are some chemical means of fixing cats and there's several companies recently that have claimed to have the holy grail of cat contraception, which can be added to food. Apparently, that hasn't been looked into yet.
You know, Jimmy, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I saw that and I like that. I've been wondering why nobody makes a cat food that has birth control in it. How, what are the chemists doing at Davis?
Well, yeah, they also-
But if they did that, they wouldn't need a veterinary school.
They have another ingredient that they can give to cats to keep them from wanting to mate and so, I think some of my ex-girlfriends actually got a hold of some of that. It's a problem, but that's another story. And enforcement, cats are notorious for not carrying their ID in their papers to say whether they're feral or whether they're stray. How are you going to know? I worry about neighbors wanting to turn neighbors in. I saw them feeding a stray cat, this is against the law. This is, boy, this is why you guys make the big bucks, right?
Right.
Well, you need a raise for having to deal with stuff like this because it's a problem. I wanted to use my whole three minutes, but you get my drift. There could be chemical alternatives for this. At least table this for now and get together with the people who are passionately involved in this. And I think with communicating with them and you guys, you guys are great for serving the city of Weed, I know you'll come up with an answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. So the very first, hang on, the very first month that this came up to us, it was a neighborhood. Well, in the meantime, it's kind of like I described it, I had a wound vac that I had to wear for eight weeks and I had no idea what it was. And once you get something, everybody's had it. So once we found out about this, I found out this was going on all over town of people dumping cat food. And there was a woman here that came to our city council meeting for a completely different issue. And she stood up and she said, "I live in an apartment complex," actually she manages an apartment complex, "and people are constantly dumping off their cats." And she said, "And the old ladies feed them." And I said, "I will be that old lady that feeds the cats. I can guarantee that." Don't tell my husband, I think he's watching, but he probably knows it. But I'm also that old lady that's going to take it down and get it spayed and neutered." So at that point, we kind of said, if somebody's feeding feral cats on their own property, that's a whole different story than dumping it behind the mercantile or at the railroad tracks or behind somebody's property that has asked them not to do it or in an alleyway or all the other places. In fact, somebody said to me today, "The business next door to me feeds the feral cats and my back porch smells." And I said, "They own their building?" And she said, "Yes." And I said, "I, you know, I'm sorry for that, but we live in America." So those of us, those of you that think it's, we're going to come arrest you because you're feeding the feral cat on the back porch, that's not going to happen. Please just have it spayed and neutered. It's the only thing, I don't know. Ken, go ahead.
Okay, I've cooled down a bit. I do, I'm a little bit furious at Jimmy's comment. That's the second time I heard that comment. One on an email from another person that I won't name and the second one from you on creating a law like this, is similar to a law in Georgia of not giving water to people standing in line to vote. One is a law that was passed because they wanted to and that there was no problem that existed. This is not the fact here. So I will give you cognitive dissonance once more, is comfortable lies are sometimes good for things instead of facing a, what did I put down? An unpleasant truth. So thank you. It just irritates the hell out of me, sorry.
Sandy?
And it didn't win no votes.
Scott Brigham?
Hello, I'm Scott Brigham. I live on Pine Street. We've lived on Pine Street in Angel Valley for about 15 years. I've been in Weed for, since 1991. We have a 20 by 20 garden that's ruined because of stray cats. They've all come, destroyed our lettuce, destroyed our onions. The only thing we can eat out of our 20 by 20 garden is tomatoes. There's feces and urine from cats all over the garden. We have chickens. They only lay about half of what they should because of all the feral cats, terrorizing them, basically. They have giant bald spots on the back of them from where they're pecking themselves. Last year, we had owls kill two of my ducks because of, I believe, all the feral cats. People are leaving bags of cat food in the alley. That's not how you fix the problem. We're in the forest. How many animals are coming into our neighborhood because of all these bags of food? You know, we got raccoons, possums, bears every once in a while. You know, we got mountain lions. If you can feed them in such a way that you can keep predators from getting to the food, you know, more power to you. But I don't see this happening. I mean, this is a start and there are a lot of other things we need to do to fix the problem, but this is a start. We have our neighbor $500 vet bill from these feral cats attacking her dog. I mean, I can go on and on, but this is a start and I don't want to use my three minutes. But I just want the city council to know that me, for one, hope you stay the course and pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Karen Keating?
Hi, my name's Karen Keating and I live on Jackson Street in Angel Valley. And yes, I called Nicole years ago for help with some stray cats, which at that time I was told she would fix them, remove them, provide food, and I did work with her for a little bit. Then I asked them to stop and all of her volunteers, people who think they're doing good like I did, went to help the cats and they continued to feed them. They were asked to stop. They crossed onto private property. They fought with neighbors. They refused. My yard is ruined, my garden is ruined. The cat that was helped with the vet bill that's all over the internet and all of this other junk that's lies was actually my little cat at first that I loved, then went to my senior neighbor and friend who has passed away and was his companion animal. And yes, at that point, I did get a little help from Nicole. And this is not a personal attack on Nicole or whoever blah blah is. And they have attacked me, they have harassed me, they have harassed my neighborhood, the cats are harassing me, they're harassing my sleep. I'm serious, the cats really are harassing because they come and they bounce all over stuff at night, you can't sleep. And then the horrible part is the raccoons come in and tear them up and I have to go out and clean up dead cats. And I run childcare. And I've asked many, many times for them to remove the cats and to stop going onto private property, to no avail, which is why I ended up with my neighbors, which are very angry about the whole situation, here asking for help. There needs to be a solution to this problem. It's been probably four, maybe even five years, I would say, since all of this started. If the feral cats had been fixed as promised, and no, I didn't stop her from doing it, if she'd followed through, there wouldn't be this problem in the first place. None of us would even be here dealing with a cat fight, okay? I'm not against cats, I'm not a mean person, I'm a loving and giving person. This is baloney, though. Nicole, I've seen her there once since this whole incident in the alley has came about. Before that, it's all her volunteers. They feed at night, they feed at all times. I've seen my neighbors fighting with them. The whole situation's completely out of control and I'm a person trying to survive with a good heart, started out with a good thing and believed in this, Saving Shasta Cats Organization. And they have failed to do what they promised. And I would like the cats, if we're going to give them an opportunity, to be removed from my area. Please, and thank you. And I would like to see a solution with everybody where everybody's not fighting with everybody constantly. It's really not productive to anybody's life, it's not helpful, which is why I asked for help. And I also believe in helping animals, obviously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That was our original 13, but we have two more.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Dana, is it Abby?
Hi, I'm Dana. I live at 1436 Crescent Drive, Mount Shasta. I'm one of the volunteers that helps feed Nicole and I've also, but I didn't start there. I started out as a foster parent and I started by taking in foster kittens that were living in wood piles in Dunsmere and taking them in, getting them adjusted to being around people, and then rehoming them. Last year, I did three cats and a mom, three kittens and a mom. This year, I'm doing five kittens and three more that I've rescued while feeding cats and there's eight more cats that I've helped rescue that we got to other foster families. And that's just this season. Personally, I've witnessed firsthand how these cats starve because when I will leave food for them, they come running for it. And that's, and I don't always get a chance to feed properly because there's people sabotaging me feeding these cats. They take away the food, they take away the bowls, they sabotage the food. People left mothballs outside to poison these cats and their food. And not to mention, all the people that lived in that neighborhood were breathing in that toxic fume from the mothballs because this has gotten so out of hand. I just like Karen, Karen, was it? Yes. I want to help the cats. I want to see a solution made. What I'm seeing here is that it is unmanaged by the city and it's having to be managed by the people who live here, which is not okay. We should all be working together on this. Like, nobody wants to be responsible for genocide and just murder all these beings. They live here, too. They came here for a reason because we live here. We've been living with cats for 10,000 years, no matter where we've been, because they're gravitated towards us, they domesticated themselves with us. They're always going to be here. So what are we going to do to help? The only thing that I've seen actually work is the TNR. These cats will get spayed, they will live happily in their communities, not bothering anybody, their numbers dwindle. I've seen one successful spot so far, these past two years that I've been working with Nicole, only one so far, where I haven't seen new cats show up, no kittens.
In Weed?
In Mount Shasta, actually closer by to where my house, across the street from the cemetery. We have permission from a woman behind what used to be Noah's Ark to feed back there. I haven't seen any kittens this year, I haven't seen any new cats. Like, that's my proof to you and I go there five days a week, sometimes seven days a week, to make sure these animals are being provided for because I see how hungry they get if I don't get them their food. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, one quote.
Okay, 12 seconds.
"When cat populations are present, the choice is not between having cats or not having cats. The choice is between having a managed community, a managed community cat population or an unmanaged one." Brian Cordis of the National Programs Director of Neighborhood Cats.
Thank you.
Riley, and I'm sorry, it looks like the pin ran out when you were... So if you could spell your last name for me?
It's De La Cruz, D-E-L-A-C-R-U-Z, 737 South Weed Boulevard. You pretty much, is it Dana? She pretty much touched a little bit on what I was-
What was your first name? I'm sorry.
Riley.
Okay, thank you.
I was concerned about, I didn't know there was a, like, you should start a volunteer type program. I'm willing to help with that. I just wanted to be in favor of tabling this and find, help, and be of help finding a solution rather than doing what everybody seems to, well, not everyone, but I'm not for this. I just want to be a part of it, I want to be a part of the solution and not the problem.
Great.
That's basically it. So we need to talk. I do have three kittens living underneath my car right now and I am feeding them and I planned on getting them spayed and neutered until I found out about this and that's why I'm here. I'm afraid you answered the-
Oh, don't stop. Get them spayed and neutered. Don't let us stop you from that.
I will. I need to talk to Dana about that and it is a problem in my neighborhood, too. So those three cats are not the only cats that the neighborhood is feeding, so.
Your neighborhood in South Weed?
Yes.
Okay, where's that again? I thought you said something else.
South Weed Boulevard.
Okay, is that, can you tell us where that is or?
Kind of, it's by that church on that street. I'm not from here originally, yeah.
Just wanted to know the location, thank you for that.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment because I did sound a little bit abrasive. I want people to know that I do have pets. It's not that I want to be cruel all the time. I do have a feral cat. He has a clipped ear, he is fixed. He was abandoned by my next-door neighbor and he made his home at my house and he's been fed ever since and he comes in all the time and he's fine. So one of the other things people can do, including all of you out in the audience, is adopt one or two, whatever you're comfortable with. We're not here to necessarily starve animals, but we do have a problem before us and we do need to solve that problem, at least start to solve it. Thank you.
No, that was all-
Put the hand back there. Give me the one that says-
Oh. Make it quick.
My name's Jim Fitzgerald and I'm at 77-
Yeah, microphone.
My name's Jim Fitzgerald and I'm at 776 Liberty here in Weed. And I do have ferrets and I feed them, but they're, and we are spaying and neutering as we're going through the process.
Thank you.
But we're doing it in our own backyard. But there's one thing I had not heard throughout this whole comment section was the fire. The fire, all the houses, all the people that were burned out, all the animals that left and now have come back.
From six years ago, or?
Yes. Well, that was part of, that's where the population explosion started, was in the feral community, was after the fires. Now, they're going through this huge thing now in talent in Phoenix over the same thing that had to do with the fires. They're having a huge, all the animals are coming back to the areas and nobody's taking care of them. And so I just, I wanted to remain quiet until I, I thought someone would bring up a comment about the fire and the explosion of the ferrets after that. Thank you very much.
Justin?
So we did have a feral cat problem prior to the fire. The fire actually reduced the feral cat population for a while. So it may seem like there was an explosion. We, my staff, I was not the chief at the time, we actually were involved in a trap-neuter and release program. I believe we were using Dr. Grace as part of that. And it was at the request of one of the, not the school, but the county childcare facility because they had a problem around their facility and the litter box was being used in the sandbox and that kind of thing. So we did try to do that prior to the fire, so we did have this problem back in 2013. We didn't re-up after the fire, obviously people were busy rebuilding. And I can attest, too, that it became expensive for the city very quick. Within the first two or three months, it was around $1,600, not counting all the extra manpower, so.
That was just my-
No, so I can see why, we did see a dip in the population after the fire and it would probably seem like there was an explosion as people rebuilt and animals were reintroduced by people moving back into residences.
And a lot of them went out into the woods and then came back.
Sure, sure.
I just, something I seen.
Yeah. Thanks, Sandy.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Catherine Downer. I live at 1488 Union Street in Weed, down over there in the valley. I'm on the other side of the, the cat populace of ferals. We have a feral cat population on our side anyways that's all spayed and neutered. They're all clipped, and they originated from a neighbor who had moved out and left the house abandoned for two years, and we had almost 300 cats explode in that populous area. And my neighbor worked with pur angels catching the cats and stuff and would come over and borrow my scale to measure how weighty the cats were so they could get them all spayed and neutered, moved most of the cats out to different barns and areas, and we have, I think, probably about 20 cats left, and the population is going down. Most of them actually will come within 10 to 15 feet of you. They don't really bother anybody around. They kill a lot of my gophers, so it's a plus for me, but, I mean, I have issues with them, you know, peeing and going places where they're not supposed to go, and I, it is sad to see that the cats cannot be captured and fixed and everything because I've seen the TNR work right before my eyes on my own property, you know, adjacent to me with what happened with my neighbor. And a lot of people come over into my area because it's secluded and there's not surveillance, and they drop cats off. So, we do get a lot of cats that are dropped there, and we do capture them and get them over to pur angels, and they get fixed, and then they get brought back into the community.
Yeah, you can't, you can't fix stupid.
Mayor, I have a question for staff. Are you, no, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, I'm, it's, but I really hope that you guys can table this ordinance and like, try to see if we can work with pur angels and with Shasta Cats and see if we can get these cats captured and maybe rehomed somewhere else, you know, away from this lady's house and not get them fed there. I mean, I would offer that I, my property is large enough that we could feed the cats over on my side and try to catch them to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Question, this ordinance does not prohibit trap and neuter, does it?
That's correct. I, I think the contention that's been raised with me separately is that the process for trapping feral cats is to put food out in a trap. So, if by prohibiting feeding, you're prohibiting people from being able to effectively trap. So, that is, that's my understanding from brief discussions I've had before the meeting, but no, if there was some way to trap cats without feeding them, then that would not be prohibited.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so, I have, I have a cat, feral cat problem in my neighborhood, and yes, I do remember when Dr. Grace was spayed and neutering the cats, and my neighbors had traps, and I allowed them to put the traps in my yard because it seemed like every other week I had a litter of kittens under my porch. And it worked for a while, and those cats are all gone, and now I have an entire new colony of cats. And my next-door neighbor is on the board of the Humane Society and is trapping and is doing all of this stuff too, but we still have the problem. I think, though, the biggest problem I have from everything that was said tonight is the clarification of this ordinance. It does not say that you cannot feed feral cats. It says you cannot feed them on somebody else's property. So, if you want them...
To clarify again, as I mentioned on the, after the chief's comments earlier, sorry to interrupt you, councilmember.
It's okay.
But the, the ordinance does technically prohibit all feeding of feral cats on public or private property without exception. The intent of enforcement based on the council's apparent direction is to enforce the ordinance as to what you've described, not individuals feeding on, on their own property.
Right.
That is something we can propose additional language to the ordinance if you wish, if that's the council's desire, but as of now, it is the council's intent in enforcement, but not, but the ordinance allows broader enforcement.
Okay. So, I liked what Dana said. They have permission. That, I think that's what we need to work on, permission.
Permission? Permission to come, feed them on property.
If you want to do permission on your property, if that's for you, but if I, if it's my personal property and I ask that they do not leave food on my property, then that, I think that's where this whole thing started. It wasn't, it was, it, I asked you not to, so please don't.
So...
My, my question on that can be, uh, public property. So, there, you know, there's private and there's public, and...
Who owns the alleyways is my question.
That would be public right of way.
Public.
That's public.
Public. So...
Typically.
Go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to say that, you know, first of all, that the TNR program is definitely, you know, a powerful program, you know, and it does work to some effect, but I think that the, the information that I'm getting is that you have to, you have to, to be effective, you have to have 70 to 95% in a breeding season to take care of the problem. And the, I don't know how to say this, it, it, to me, there's, there's a, uh, some wonderful intent, wonderful intent, but I, but I see, what I see happening is that the connection with the possible salvation of these, these animals, touching people's hearts and their emotions, uh, kind of skews, skewers the, the reality of that, that these, this, this concern is actually destroying the natural balance of feral cats. Feral cats have been around for centuries. They're around people. They don't exist well in the wild. They need people. And this imbalance that's created, that's what, that's our problem right now, that, 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 that there is an imbalance. And the, uh, it, it's not just the cats, it's what the cats do to neighborhoods. The people that don't have these, have the problem, but they have to put up with. But back to the, the emotional part of this, I definitely understand it, but I can't, I, I, I don't think that, that the, that, that the cost of the balance of the feral cats are being taken in, in consideration. This, this balance hasn't been before in my lifetime, this imbalance. And the imbalance is caused by people not being totally responsible. It, the, the idea that we're going to drop off food to these cats and not be responsible...
Is this puppy responsible?
It's very irresponsible, but I, but I, I definitely understand, you know, the issue, but I, I think what we need to do is, you know, come up with some solutions that's similar to, you know, is it possible to, to take these cats and bring them in and catch them and maybe take them back to your neighborhood? Take them back to where, where you live so you can actually be responsible for these cats, not expect a community or a city to, 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 to take care of the problem.
You've got like 300 cats living in your city right now.
That's not, well, my point is that this is how I feel about it. I gave you a chance for your, your, for, for you. You know, this, 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 this is, this is my...
The neighborhoods though, in your city.
This is, this is the way I feel about it, and, and there's...
But hold on. You will be excused if you can't be respectful. Everyone has a chance to speak.
I'm, I'm not going to sit here and just not let that happen. It's not, it's not respectful.
Can we request more time to speak next time?
I'm... No. Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
This is completely an hour.
Okay, the cat, the cat, well, the issues that we, issues we have as a, as a council here is, are, are we going to be, are we responsible for bringing in, uh, wild animals into our neighborhood? Are we bringing, are we, are we going to be responsible for mountain lions? Are we going to be responsible for bringing in raccoons? Are we...
Did I ask a question?
So, my, my point is, I think, I really think the intent is, 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 well, the emotional part of it is, is, is there, but I, I think the actual, TNR, I don't, I don't believe in TNR. I don't believe that we're going to get 70 to 95% in each, in each breeding. So, that's, that's my, my point. Did I say something?
Stacy, did you want to say something?
I do. I can't, I can't, I can't, my mom and dad taught me to be respectful. I can't be for people speaking out. If you can't do that, I'm going to ask you to leave. So, if you have something to say, we gave you time to speak. There's rules that have been established for a time period. That's why the three minutes was established. You have to speak within your time and be respectful. As he mentioned, he was speaking, he lets you speak, let him speak instead of make comments. I'm not for that. It's not respectful. It's not the right thing to do in this day and age. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, I see you guys doing it to each other, but I hear you.
We aren't...
This is the only time we can talk to each other.
We aren't talking amongst ourselves about decisions.
We all need more time to be together then.
We can't, ma'am. The Brown, the Brown Act won't let us do that.
If people want more time to speak, how are we going to do that?
I'm, I'm just uncomfortable.
Public comment is over.
Could I ask a question?
No, I'm sorry. I do have a question for Nicole.
Yes.
How many, how long have you been, when did, I'm sorry, I've got so many names on here. Hang on. When did, what year did Karen first call you?
I can't tell you exactly. I can go back to my records and look.
Five years ago?
I think it was four, three or four.
Four or five, after the fire?
No, not five.
After the fire?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so if, so if you've been doing, if we've been doing this, and I'm going to say we, I've been helping our community.
Yes.
We've been doing this for four or five years.
Yes.
Why have we gotten worse? If we've been doing this...
Uh, I, I can give you lots of answers. Would you, would you like, would you like to hear?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are people from, sorry, Jeremy, are people from all over South County going, "Weeds gullible, we're going to take our cats there"?
No.
So...
I can, I can...
Okay.
Attempt to answer.
All right.
Um, well, one of late is the pandemic. Um, no, don't, uh...
Well, go ahead.
No, do you want to know?
We can't get your animals into the vet during the pandemic, so go ahead.
Yes, so therefore kitten explosion this year, completely legitimate, not made up, okay?
Okay.
So, and, and I mean, the vets will, the vets will verify that.
Okay.
So...
Well, let's pretend we're three years ago. What was...
Okay, so, basically, uh, people in this community abandon their pets at an alarming rate. Do you want to know how many calls I get every day and every week? Oh, at least maybe six a week. My neighbor moved out. My neighbor was evicted. Oh, by the way, left behind a pregnant cat, or by the way, left behind a cat with kittens. So, we're all already starting behind the eight ball, right?
Okay.
And is, is the weed city doing anything for cats? You've admitted, no. You help dogs. You license dogs, and you do things related to that with your animal control officer, but you don't do cats.
Does, do, does Dunsmere or Mount Shasta do cats?
They, I don't know, they don't do spay, neuter, but they are more helpful to us than...
How do they help you?
We, they respond to complaints, and they will actually call me if they have a sick or an injured animal. I've never had anyone from Weed offer to help us or call us and say, "We have a sick animal. We need help." And also, I've never had anyone besides Karen call and say, "You know, we need assistance with the, the spay-neuter thing." And so, if you'll allow me another moment.
Uh huh.
So, Karen was doing a fantastic thing. She was finding homes for kittens from the unwanted litters, and I, I think she was doing some spay-neuter but couldn't really afford it, so that's why she called upon me. And I told her, yes, that I would remove as many as I could to barn homes, and the ones that were, could be socialized, that we could get young enough as kittens, we would take to fosters and we would find homes. And then we would spay and neuter the adults. And so, and she differs on this, but she did tell me, "You cannot bring them back." And I said, "I have to bring them back because I can't, I can't find places for all of them, so I'll have to bring some of them back." And she said, "Well, then, you know, you, you can't do that." So, for a while, I would say maybe six months or so, I stopped doing spay-neuter there, and I moved on to other locations. So, what I need you to understand about what we do is that we cover Mount Shasta, we cover Dunsmere, we cover Weed, um, and we do the best we can. We're a group of volunteers. I started out well-meaning, wanting to make a difference here and help the animals, and it soon just, like, just ballooned out of control because people recognized that I actually did something. I do do tons of spay-neuter. I take so many kittens into foster and then find homes. So, we're actually, like, if you wanted to look at my numbers, um, I, I mean, we do so much, but we can't keep up with the volume because we need help from not only the community, from volunteers, but also from the city. I, I mean, I raise a lot of money, and I, we spend a lot of money to help animals, and to you, it may look like nothing, but we've done an enormous amount. We just simply cannot keep up. And your residents here, you have some fantastic residents. I work with at least 12 of your residents who maintain feral colonies. They, I help some of them with food. I provide food, and then I help pay for their, our, my nonprofit helps pay for their spay-neuter for the feral colonies they maintain. I've lent traps to them. You know, they call me for help if they have a sick cat, but I mean, they, they, they are, in essence, the answer to this issue, and they are part of your solution, but I don't think you really know them. Unfortunately, most of them didn't come to the meeting tonight or speak, but I can give you a list of their names. These are fantastic people.
That's my initial question. Two weeks ago, when I heard your name, I was told you were going to call me. You didn't, but that's fine, because my thing was about...
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Stacy Green is my name.
Yes.
I was told you were going to call me within two days, and my question was about finance.
I, I've never even...
Okay, that's what I was told. So, regardless, I'm just clarity.
I've been never given your name.
So, what I, what I have to say, ma'am, is that I've heard about your organization and the resources. That's why I asked about resources. If you're, if you're so good, you could help out, why couldn't the premise be for more money to be given to you, whatever reason? I don't know if the city has that clause.
Okay, so, yes, so that's a great argument. So, I can tell you, it's not just a matter of money. We're talking about logistics.
Education, too.
Education, definitely, but we're talking about, we're a group of volunteers, and, and I'm not making this up. I work seven days a week, 365 days a year, 18 hours a day, okay?
Volunteering, I understand that.
No, what, no, what I'm saying is, I'm totally wholly committed to this, and what I want you to understand is, one person and four other volunteers cannot cover the volume. And I want you to also just please understand that this is not just an issue here. It's an issue in every city, in every state in the U.S., and the Humane Society and all of these other animal rescue organizations wouldn't even, they wouldn't even exist if this overpopulation issue wasn't an ongoing problem, even with all the spay-neuter that we do all over the U.S. and all, you know, the Humane Society does and everything. It's still a problem because people still abandon their cats. So, and if they're abandoning them pregnant or with kittens, you're already starting from a position of lacking. And so, what has happened, I believe, is that I have been made the scapegoat because everyone goes, "Oh, she offered to feed. She offered to help. She's going to fix it all, and if she doesn't, well, it's all her fault."
Her fault, okay.
Okay, so I just need you to understand. I take full responsibility for the fact that I can't do it all, and I am doing everything I can to, to get more volunteers, more fosters to educate, but I can't change stupid. Do you know what I mean?
Uh, yeah.
I do.
Yes. So, no, I mean, what I'm saying is...
Well, no, and we can't fix people that are horses' rear ends either. So, so to go with, everybody needs to spay and neuter their animals, it's, 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 it's not even an argument because they won't because they're horses' rear ends.
Got it. So, so what I was asking for...
So, I might, I have another question. Does, does Mount Shasta, the city of Mount Shasta and the city of Dunsmere give you money to...
No, no, we're private. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization.
So, what, what kind of help would you expect from the city of Weed?
What I, well, I would love, I mean, funding's great, but what I would really like more is for us to sit down and have a meeting with Mount Shasta Animal Hospital and, you know, myself, and that we could actually set out a TNR plan to target all of the, the colonies and the communities and just start knocking them out, you know, and getting it done. My, my problem right now is that I, I never... You know, and getting it done. My, my problem right now is that I, I never know which colony to go to first because it's an ongoing thing. And it's, you feel like it's like a losing battle, but yet we're like, we're getting cats fixed all the time.
Do you advocate trespassing on private property?
I do not. And I will let you know that I was, I was just having a conversation with two, uh, two residents who, uh, did speak. And I wanted to have an opportunity to speak with them just directly to say, you know, how can I help? Let's work this out. And they said, you know, that we've been, my, my organization, my volunteers have been trespassing. And so I was not aware that some of the areas where they were going were trespassing because at least I can say for the, um, alleyway in Angel Valley, I understood the alleyway to be like an easement to, to have public access. And so I didn't feel that that was a. When Karen, when Karen asked us to stop feeding on her property, um, we, we stopped. I mean, she kicked us out. And then she kicked us out of James next door, and then that's when we moved into the alley. So, and I'm not really sure what she's talking about with regard to arguments. I, I don't like to operate that way. I, I want us to operate on a higher level here where we're looking at solutions and we're wanting to fix the problem. And I really wish that residents had come to me and said, you know, let's all work together. Because what, when it works best is when the residents actually help you trap and, and, and work in concert with us. That's where we've been most successful in controlling the population because we're only five people. And, and I'm always, uh, looking for volunteers. And what happens a lot is you say, you get someone who says, oh, I'll help you. And then they, they're out for a couple hours and they go, oh, I don't think I can do this. You know, this is too much. The work's too hard. I'm not committed. And that happens a lot. So yes, I am a person who, um, I think big. I believe in abundance. I believe money's going to come and everything's going to come and I can fix it. So I do have probably the bad quality of taking on too much. I bite off more than I can chew because I think, oh, we're going to fix it all. And then when it comes down to it, you're like, well, we're five people. How can we get them all fixed fast enough? But I can tell you good news. I have a really, um, nice, uh, donation coming. It will allow us to do a large amount of spay neuter. I'm not talking just a few, but we're talking hundreds. I'm ordering a large number of traps because we don't have enough.
Well, that was, yeah, that was one of the things that everybody kept talking about TNR. And I, I didn't drive around all much, but when I asked the police that do, they're not seeing traps.
Well, oh, and that was a drop trap, by the way. The one that you said didn't have a door. Drop traps? Are you familiar with drop traps? It's a, it's a drop trap. So, yeah, they don't require a floor. So. No. So when it's set, um, it's propped up and the little door that you saw that had been pulled out. Yes, we, we took so someone wouldn't take off with it. One of the volunteers was, was, was holding on to it.
And then the one was, I allowed somebody to put on a barrel of coffee, which was illegal.
Uh huh.
But I wanted them to catch the kittens if they were trying to.
Got it.
And that, my concern with that, and I expressed that, and I don't remember her name. Somebody was going to steal the trap because it was in such plain sight.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's right. I talked to the girl today and they were to, I asked them if the cat colony had gone away. They said they thought it had.
She caught them.
She, she caught them and she, she's.
Was it you that I spoke with?
That, that water bowl is the same one from out there way back.
Right. So I spoke with them today. They said they thought that the kittens were gone. But that's the only time I see traps. I mean, I'm not driving around looking for traps.
So we, so we don't leave traps. One, because they're stolen when you leave them or vandalized. And, um, if you, I'm sure you seem educated about many things with regard to ferals now from your presentation. You know that, um, when you trap, you don't leave a trap unattended. It's dangerous to do that, especially in the summer. So we, we trap, we take them, we leave. We do not leave traps there. That's not, um, that's not good, a good practice.
So when you leave a trap, then somebody's sitting off to the side watching it?
You got it. It's watched at all times. Um, very, very important because animals can die in traps and they must be immediately covered. The ferals have to be covered. They can harm themselves trying to get out of the traps. If they're, you know, left in the sun.
Can I suggest something?
Yeah.
You have great information that I, which I've heard six, seven years. Can we get that information and see what we vote to go for? Because it sounds though we might need to capture information and get something together to move forward. I don't know. But I, 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 I see your direct tile and I appreciate that information.
Yeah.
But I think it needs to be on a larger scale.
Oh, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, I love that.
So we can do a vote first because we have some more things to do. But I don't, at one time is important, but I, I appreciate that.
I appreciate that so much. May I just say one more thing?
Yes.
With regard to the mercantile. So years ago, um, I had heard that the mercantile population was under control. And there was a woman, I'm sorry, I don't recall her name. She said, I got them all fixed. It's all taken care of. You don't have to worry about it. You know, they're not there anymore. So, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're hearing reports of all these calves. And which I think probably what happened is people dumped kitties, which is a common thing. And then it just exploded again. And then there's a really wonderful resident here, uh, in Weed, um, who, uh, is a foster for us. And she, um, has taken over that colony and cares for them and feeds them. And we're getting as many fixed as we can and we're taking kittens to foster. And so, you know, it may not look like we're doing a lot, but trust me, we're doing a lot. It would be even worse if.
Thank you for sharing that specifically. That's important. Thank you.
Okay.
Kim?
Oh, so right now, we talked about how all the veterinarian, uh, they're all backed up.
Yep.
And I know people who, to get their dogs or cats spayed or neutered, are having to go to Ashland or having to go to Kama Falls or have. So I have a trap in my yard and I catch these cats. How am I going to get them spayed and neutered? Do I have to go through you and you get things done faster?
So you can text me or you can text Kim through the Humane Society?
I mean, I don't really have them right now.
I get it. Yeah. So what you do is you, you call or te- text me first or text Kim first and say that's your plan. And then, um, I, like, I just got, uh, forty-eight spay neuter appointments for two weeks, um, at Shingle Town Animal Clinic. Because they get me in and they'll do clinics for me and they're good.
That's for cats up here?
Uh, yes. They'll do any feral cat I bring in and they're really fantastic. So I, I just made forty-eight appointments for the, and I'm, we're going to focus here. Yeah, on Weed. And then Kim, uh, works, uh, through the Humane, Siskiyou Humane Society, works in conjunction with the SNIP program, which is a low-cost spay neuter clinic in Talent, Oregon. Yeah, but she, she has, um, longstanding, you know, ongoing appointments. So I think it's every other week. And she takes feral cats from the community. People call her and say, I have a feral cat. And she takes them and she puts them in a van and she drives them all the way up there and gets them fixed and brings them back. So there's a lot of good going on. And I think just because no one's really shared it with you, you don't, you don't realize it, but there's a lot of good going on. And we can build on that.
That I didn't even know about your agency until last week.
Yeah, yeah.
I've never heard of Shasta cats.
So, well, I'm glad, glad you know now and we can build on that. So.
Um, so you don't advocate going onto private property?
No, I don't.
Or public property?
No, I, I'm, I'm a law, I'm a law abiding citizen. I don't believe in trespassing. And I'm a respectful person and I've asked my volunteers to also be respectful if there have been instances where they haven't or I haven't. That was not our intention and that will change.
Okay.
But you're aware that that has happened. That's part of the.
I was made aware. Yes. I just spoke with two people who told me.
I just want to ask them at the end, the article that Jim Strico sent to us, I was, I researched it. And the, the sterilization with the one shot or whatever, that's still in research. It hasn't been approved yet. They said hopefully next year, just so everyone knows that. He mentioned the article. So if you look for it, I looked it up earlier and it's not, it hasn't been approved yet, but it's a possibility.
Well, let's be on the research.
There is a medication. Um, they call it MA. Um, but it cannot be used for longer than six months at a time. It has to be administered in exact doses based on the weight of the animal. It's very problematic in a feral colony to be able to manage that kind of thing.
Right. So it's not approved. That part was in the article too. Not approved yet. But I'm glad to hear that there's some things that we're looking at. So know what we're going through. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
I'll be short and sweet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't hear you.
I'll be short and sweet. At least short. First of all, I don't, the midnight hour thing with everybody showing up at the last minute while we're looking at the final stages of this kind of bothers me. I'm not actually blaming the public, but I do want to respond to the Weed press as never reporting the news that's going on at the Weed City Council so that people can be abreast of these issues. So no offense to the clients out in front, but to the Weed press, shame on you. I think from tonight's meeting, first and foremost is education. I think it's been very educational for the people tonight. Not only on this dais up here, but of those participating out in the, out in the audience. And it's clear that if people are truly interested, you need to step up, step back or step out. That's my little thing I like to say because if you're not volunteering, you're also part of the problem. Cruelty is happening no matter which direction we go. The nonfeeding of animals will shorten the population. Population shortened, wild animal population shortened. I will consider feral cats, uh, a wild animal. They will get in shorter supply as the food supply diminishes. They will produce less cats as the food supply diminishes. It's, it's, it's in Mother Nature's way. It doesn't say that there's no kindness here. We're not restricting people going out and trying to get cats neutered. If you can get them young enough, you can get them in, get them neutered, take care of them. That again is the public's responsibility. I do not see it as the city's responsibility. What we have to deal with on a city level is our budget, as explained by the chief. Uh, we have a limited budget. We cannot afford a TNR that is going to be effective and going to be successful. That takes way more money than we have. Anything I leave out here? If we don't do anything, we do have certain results that we're going to take a look at. There's going to be a lot more killing of birds. They attract raccoons, skunk and other vermin. You create feces and smell. And they also can promote disease as been, as discussed in this whole meeting. So with those things, those are my comments regarding all of this. And I will let my vote speak for how I feel about it. Are we at that point?
Anything? Did you have one more thing? Make it less than thirty seconds.
Um, okay. Every feral that we trap is saved.
Um, we vaccinate against feline diseases. We vaccinate against rabies. We treat for fleas, ear mites, intestinal parasites. We F-snap them, which is, it's a test, a blood test, um, to test for feline diseases. So most rescues don't do that. So what we do is special and we help promote the health of not only the feral population, but just the outdoor cat population. And I'd love to do an education session because in all due respect, what you mentioned about cats being wild and wildlife, they actually aren't. That, yeah, they've been domesticated and they, and even though they have fear of humans, they're actually dependent upon us for care. We've created the issue and, and I, it's, that's not entirely true.
It sounds like we need five more of you and twenty more volunteers.
Do.
Yeah.
Do you guys follow up with boosters?
We can't do boosters with ferals, but we do with fosters, the ones that we adopt.
And I'm going to guess with ferals, they probably don't live long enough to get a booster because their lifespan is not. Unless they live under the mercantile.
Well, actually, some ferals, the ferals at my house, they've, we've been there ten years and we have some that are ten, that I got fixed right when I moved. So it has to do with, um, offering adequate shelter, proper care, proper food.
Right. But now, but you're saying the feral's at your house.
Yes, because I'm there.
Because you're, you're being a responsible, believe it or not, you're the pet owner.
Yeah, got it.
Even though they're feral. I mean, I get that. It's kind of like the person that has a barn cat.
Right.
That's feral.
Totally.
But they've gotten it spayed and neutered and they're feeding it mice.
Right.
Or they're feeding it a small bowl of food in the morning and they're, you're on your own in the afternoon.
Which is what I actually meant when I said, we're not.
Yeah. So, you know, and I've seen, because there's a feral colony, little did I know, till all this started, that there's a feral colony and somebody's feeding them up on public property on my street.
Uh huh.
And I've seen those cats because they all look like my little Timmy.
Yeah.
Hit in the street numerous times, which.
Oh, that's so sad.
It is very sad because I don't look. Then I have to put my blinders on when I drive it and it's not safe.
Yep.
Um, but none of it's safe. That's the problem with a feral cat. My cats all come in every night. They stay in the house. They can go out during the day. They hang out on the back porch anyway.
Yeah.
Um, so, so there's just, their, their life's not that great anyway. And as long as, as you guys understand, if private property is out and public, or private property is by permission and public property is out, then.
But, I'm sorry, public property?
Public, that you can't feed them on public property.
And so, and where do we feed them?
Um, I don't know. I guess you let that old lady, yeah, where you get permission.
So quick question then. So how does one, uh, do trap TNR?
Well.
If you can't.
I'm pretty sure that the, this, the mercantile will probably give you permission. There's certain places they'll probably give you. Apparently the business next door to my friend, who feeds them, and you probably don't know about it, they may give you permission.
Yeah.
Because they already do it anyway.
I hear you.
So to just get the permission.
Yeah.
Of, you know, and from the, the old ladies at the apartment complex. Who like to feed them anyway.
Um, with regard to vaccines, um, the first shots give a lot of initial immunity. I don't even really booster a lot of my own personal animals because it, they get initial immunity from the first. So it is valuable, um, to them. So.
And I have a foster dog.
Yeah. That's great. That's good.
Sometimes not really.
Do you have any ears?
Yeah, fine.
I'd also point out that this is an ordinance mayor and that it didn't come from the mount in stone. So it can always be amended at a later point.
Okay.
Boy, I hope that you would invite me for a, um, a session for us to actually formulate some solutions that will work. What do you think?
Um.
Okay. Well, that's my question.
Are we ready to vote? Do we want to change anything? I.
Madam Mayor, just to add, if you would like to add language about specifying the, the private property with consent of the property owner, you may.
I would like to do that. I would like to do that.
Procedurally, um, there's two ways to do that. The first is I can propose some language. That would require this to be the first read.
Okay.
So, um, this means it would come back for the second read at the next council meeting. The alternative is for me to propose language in writing and at the next council meeting as the first read. So, either way.
I would like some language that incorporates the people that we are aware of or the other agencies that can be a part of this. Because I, apparently there's some conversation that hasn't happened and I thought it had. That would be my only piece when people are saying to table it. Because I'm looking for more information to come that supports all the work that our chief has done. Our city manager has mentioned has been done and people, I, that is my concern right now. Because I think there's some other support. I'm not, you can throw the blame anywhere you want. You didn't come to speak. We didn't know about it. We don't have the information. And that's the portion, that's the.
I'm not throwing blame.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't targeting that to you, ma'am. Just making a general statement.
Okay, got it.
So I was saying that that's my concern right. So I would know if we could do that. Incorporating that, is that too much of a input?
That would likely not be a part of the ordinance. That would be, for example, um, either creating a subcommittee of the council to consider the issue further, meet with community groups as needed, or to have another session next month perhaps to talk about the potential ordinance options. I'll remind you, we did that, um, several months ago and, um, but now I think more of the community is aware of the, of the issue. I know council meetings are not always, agendas aren't closely read all the time. But, um, the, so we could, again, sorry, just to wrap up, we could either form a subcommittee or bring it back for another listening session. And then just, and then the council can provide updated direction. Um, neither of those would keep the process going on the ordinance. So after that process played out, we would then propose an updated ordinance, exactly.
Can't we just approve this ordinance and update it later?
So you could do that. This would become a.
Get it on, get it on the books and then update it second after, if you want to form a committee. All I can remember is that when we did chickens, it took eight months, for crying out loud. And that's not what this body is about. We have spent, uh, four hours on this almost and I don't know. I think we need to come to some kind of conclusion and not just keep batting the ball around.
Well, I would respectfully disagree because, because of information is important for all of us. Information is knowledge, that thing we learned in grade school. And I think not having information is a deterrent. So some information I think was very important. So, some information, I think, was very important to hear tonight, at least for me it was, to make a decision. So, I don't, I don't think it's a waste of time. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that.
It's important to hear, but we've been talking about this since May, June, July, August, and now it's September.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to clarify something on, and for the benefit of the paper, because some blame got, they did run an article on this in May, and it was on a prominent social media site and had over 100 comments. So, the paper did do its, its duty and, and made it when we first brought this up. There may not have been follow-up on the previous meetings, but it was brought to the public's attention. I just want that out there, so the paper doesn't look like they're not doing what they do. They did, they did bring this up.
An order, okay. Okay, so we're good with you. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
And there's no more cards? No one speak? Anyone, no one? Okay.
No.
Public comments closed, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 464-2021, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Weed, and in Chapter 902, Title IX of the Weed Municipal Code regarding feeding of feral cats.
I would like to see the language added to say not on public property and private property by permission.
I made a motion. Is it, was there any second?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Here the most...
Sorry.
She can add to your motion if that's acceptable for you.
Yeah, she can place a friendly amendment on the motion.
It was, that's what I was doing?
I don't know.
Yes.
So, you're, you were adding to his...
And, and so, my question for you, Mayor, is...
I'm sorry.
Did you want that language added now, or do you want to bring it back at the next, are you proposing to bring it back at the next meeting?
So, if we add it now, this would be a first reading.
Correct.
And we bring it back next month.
Correct.
I would second that, if we add that language.
I, I agree with the, the amendment, and I second the motion.
The amended motion?
Yes, amended motion.
Sorry, let's, let's back up here.
Thank you, Ryan.
I made a motion.
Yeah, there was no second, I believe.
No second.
No second, okay.
Bob just...
Bob's seconded.
My amendment.
But I think before Mayor Tavler's motion, it should specify the language that you would like added, your amendment to the, to the motion. Would you like me to propose some?
Didn't I say that?
Yeah, but we haven't specified, we haven't specified the language. So, my, my, the proposed language I would add is, is Section 9.02.020, which says it shall be unlawful for any person within the city to intentionally provide food, water, or other forms of sustenance to a feral cat or feral cat colony. And I would add, or you are proposing to add on any street, sidewalk, park, or any other public property, or on any private property without consent of the property owner or lawful tenant. That would be my recommended language to address your point.
I like it.
Is that the motion, the amendment, amended motion?
Yes, that is what I would like it to say.
I do have questions when you start to call the motion.
Did, was there a second for your amended motion?
I second.
Bob's seconding, okay, great.
Question? My question is, if this passes, would any type of forward work be in connection with the agencies or persons that have expressed interest to help this along? Would that be added? Can that be added at the end?
Well, it doesn't need to be in the ordinance.
I don't think it needs to be in the ordinance.
Yeah, so I would recommend not putting it in the ordinance. You can recommend to the police chief to engage in outreach first.
I'm just wondering about resources. I'm, I'm, I'm impelled by that, because what I've heard for the last hour and a half is resources that maybe, may or may not be a, a help to this situation, and that's where I'm stuck at, so.
Well, but again, we can always amend this. Again, if we have this in place, then we can't, we can't form a committee.
Correct, you could also form a subcommittee.
That could work with, a subcommittee, that could work with one of us, the public service officer.
Community service.
Community service, one of them, that can work together on this. We can do that, and we can still have the ordinance.
But it's not specified that that would actually happen, because it's just a suggestion, right?
Well, yeah, but if we say it's going to happen, hopefully it happens.
I've been here eight years, and I've seen things like that happen.
Are you going to be on the committee?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if I have the expertise or the, or the time or the...
I believe you would have to have a committee meeting, make that on agenda item, or can we do it, yeah?
Yeah, okay.
Correct, we would put it on the...
We could do that for next month.
I'm just impelled by that. That's where I'm at. I just want, that, that was my question.
Well, I, then you can learn.
You, you can...
Kind of like I did with cannabis.
You can put, you can move the motion since it's been a second.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah, and to, just to clarify again, since this would be a first reading, you, you, your motion is for a, to do the first reading, or waving, introducing the ordinance, waiving the first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, why is that? Because this was the second reading. Why, go back to first reading?
Because there's new, there's new language, exactly.
Just so everyone understands that, it goes back to first reading because of the suggested changes that were noted, right?
Right, because we changed it.
And so, the, at the next council meeting, there will be a second reading, as we were originally intending today, and then the ordinance, if adopted at the second reading next month, would become effective 30 days later. So, in, my math is terrible.
November?
November, correct.
Effective 40 days after that.
No, sorry, Mayor Palpini, it would be, the second read would be at next month's meeting in October, and then it would, 30 days later would become effective.
Oh, I forgot about October.
So, am I doing, I moved the reading in full?
Do we have to start over again?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
You've moved and seconded, and there's, is there, and council discussion, or?
We're done with the discussion. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, I think. I'm just, I'm sorry, I shouldn't throw the thinking.
You got to say aye or no.
I'll just say aye. I just have that concern. As long as it's in the minutes, and it was minutes, because I stated it before, motion into question, so it's in the minutes, and I'm okay with that, I guess.
I vote no.
Okay.
I vote no.
All right, thank you. Now, do I need to do this? I move the, no, we don't need to do that.
No, you've moved, yeah, just the first read.
We're done.
You introduced and waived the first reading.
Okay, so we're done?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
He'll be back here next month.
Yes.
Is Nicole still here? Oh, there she is. I would invite her, and I don't see the representative from the Humane Society. I mean, if, if they want to have a counter to what was presented tonight, I'm, I would invite them to present that, either in a package or, or in the...
For next month?
Yeah.
For next month?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you need someone else, I'll, I'll tell that, and if you can.
And I, I think it would also be nice that now that we know about them, if they gave you information about their resources that you can give to people who have...
We do refer people with feral cat problems to the Humane Society regularly. That's normally how we handle it. We don't go and pick up cats. We don't have anywhere to put a cat.
Right, right.
In, in, in reviewing that article, they were just, this, she was quoted in the paper in May, so people are aware of their program. It's just, what I'm saying is, is I, I feel like they were, kind of felt like they were blindsided and not allowed enough time to present anything, so please do so. That, that PowerPoint was put together. Again, we had an emergency. I, I stepped up to fill a spot, but I'm not against hearing opposing points. I'm not an expert on this.
I appreciate that, because we, we weren't aware of the meeting. Someone let me know just less than a week before.
Two weeks ago, on special, on social media, two weeks ago on social media.
See, I don't do social media.
No, she...
It's not my thing.
Shereen let you know.
Okay, yeah, Shereen told me.
After she talked to Kim and I, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Communication going forward on both sides.
Yeah, excellent, great. That's what we need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ryan, item number B.
Great. I'll be very brief, hopefully. This is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 465-2021. What this ordinance does is replaces Chapter 19.01 of Title 19 and Chapter 8.24 of Title VIII of the Weed Municipal Code. 19.09, .01 sets the procedures for administrative, for issuing administrative citations, and 8.24 sets the procedures for public nuisances. Basically, what we're doing here is repealing and replacing those chapters to streamline the procedures, make them a little bit clearer and easier to implement for city staff, and also to understand, in particular, the appeal procedures for folks that are going through the appeal processes. The...
Oh, hey, can you guys take it out there, the talking? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the, the definition of a nuisance under Chapter 8.24 is mostly the same as it was before this ordinance. There are a few changes, adding a catch-all, for example, for situations that, that aren't expressly called out in the nuisance definition, but again, it's really replacing procedures for implementing nuisance, nuisance abatement and for issuing administrative citations. Doesn't affect the substance. It doesn't make anything new illegal or in violation of the municipal code.
So, the content that we previously discussed, that's part of the public space. Do we have to do anything because of that?
No, so that, that's under a separate chapter. What the public nuisance and the administrative citation section says is any violation of the town, the city's municipal code would be subject to administrative citation. So, assuming there's some violation of that, it, it doesn't need to be updated every time an ordinance is updated. Automatically, any violation of an ordinance is subject to the administrative citation proceedings, and it may be subject to the public nuisance proceedings, depending on what the conduct is.
Do you have any more discussion? I'll, I'll, I'll start beginning if we need to.
No discussion? We're good?
I need the title right now. So, I will move that the reading in full of the body of the, the resolution? Ordinance, sorry, other side, sorry, everyone. I move that the reading in full of the body of the ordinance number 465-2021, an ordinance of the city, and then the title, I don't have that on the thing. Oh, that's right, okay. I, so I, I move that that be voted on, or moved. We said the last meeting, we didn't have to read it.
We don't have to read it, Ryan?
Yeah, you, I recommend reading the...
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the, just to clarify, the, the recommendation that I made at the last council meeting was that, I believe that you were doing two separate motions, one to introduce and one to waive the first reading, and I was recommending just consolidating those. This, though, you would, or in, in either case, you would still read the title. So, you would basically...
Title regarding administrative citations and public nuisances? The change as noted. Can I say it that way?
We, no, with changes...
Excuse me, I, I'm confused here. Haven't we already, just by the reading and adoption by title only, haven't we already stated that we were reading by title only?
Yeah, we don't have to say that.
So, just, okay.
That, that language is intended to clarify that we're not...
So, the only thing we need to do is make a, a motion to, to accept a second reading of ordinance number 465-2021 regarding administrative citations and public nuisances, correct?
I'll, I'll accept that. You just proposed a meeting, I'm fine. Just accept that and go move on.
That, that's fine, yeah, that'll work.
Yeah, so I take the amended motion from Councilman Hall. That's fine.
Yeah, and just to, sorry, just to briefly clarify, Councilmember Hall, the second reading and adoption by title only language is intended to specify that we're not actually going to read the full ordinance out loud, although I'm, I've seen it done before, and it's terrible, but... So, so that, that's what that language means, but, but your proposed motion is fine.
And I'm okay as an initial proposal for it to be switched to him. I'm okay with that.
All right, I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 465-2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item C. Council would consider determining the city's position on two resolutions to be voted on at the League of California Cities Meeting in September. Twenty-second, twenty-third, right, Ken?
Yeah.
Are you going to be there Thursday night?
Where's it at?
Sacramento. So, you're going to go to their party?
I gotta respond to the party, but I'm probably just going to take off to my daughter after the party. Unless she's buying the alcohol, then she'll come and try this.
Yeah, she'll come, yeah. You do?
That is the opportunity, just to clarify, to air any grievances with all of my bosses, who will all be there, so, so.
So, Ken, are you going to present the two items, and then we, what the proposal is?
As far as I can get it, we're going to make sure that I...
That we approve resolution at this, at the league for approval of the 1% local sales tax and for the resolution of the governor and legislature for CUPC funding for the railroad lines to ensure whatever.
I'm, yes, on both of those.
I'll second it.
Then I have my marching order.
He made a motion, right? Did he make a motion?
Do we have to do a motion and?
Yeah.
Oh.
Wasn't that your motion? Clary seconded it just now.
Oh, okay, Stacy already did.
It's been moved and seconded to approve voting on the, yes, on the two resolutions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, item D. Council would consider approving resolution 15-02021, approving the Cal Fire Protection Agreement.
That's on the Hammond's area, right?
No.
No.
No, 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 this is the grant.
Oh, the grant.
That Steve wrote.
That's why I asked.
I don't...
I'd like a motion.
He already kind of gave a brief description. We, we pay 9,600 or something, and they pay 9,600 roughly, right? I make a motion to approve resolution number 15-2021, resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed, California, approving the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Agreement, 7GF21026, for services from the date of last situtory on page one of the agreement to June 30, 2022.
All in favor?
Under the Rural Fire Capacity Program with Cooperative Forestry Assistance Act of 1978.
You can blame Steve for that.
I'll second that.
It's a lot.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, that passes. Consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Sandy, are you keeping up? All in favor?
Hey, you have all that rest time. You had three hours sitting there.
Okay. Who seconded? Yeah.
Kim did.
Okay, all right, we're good. Everybody said aye?
Aye, 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 aye.
All right, there are no items moved. Staff reports. Oh, Justin, you done?
Not anymore, staff reports.
Oh, by the way, you did a good job.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was good.
When's the meeting with those people? I want to know right now.
What's that?
The meeting for those people, I want to know right now. I'm kidding.
That's the side next week. Emily?
Nothing to report.
Steve? Shh. You probably have something, but not now. Yeah, okay. No? Ryan, are you done?
No, I have a very long presentation to... No, no, nothing to report.
Aren't we moving?
Yeah, are we moving in there?
Into the other room?
Yes, so we do have closed session now.
We have a closed session?
Yeah, we do. It should be quick, isn't it?
I move that we close the regular session, move to the open session.
It has been moved in...
Who seconded?
Closed session, no one has yet. I haven't finished the motion.
I second. I second.
Stacy, Bob? It's been moved and seconded and moved to closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, public that's still here, thank you.
Timmer?
Oh.